Welcome. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, January 23rd, 2023, the second day of the Year of the Rabbit. I am Select Board Chair Leonard Diggins, and I will now confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yeah.
John Heard?
Here.
Steve DeCoursey?
Yes.
Eric Helms?
Yes.
Jim Feeney?
Here.
Doug Heim?
Here.
Ashley Meyer?
Here.
Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted in a fully remote format consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, signed into law on July 17th, 2022, which further extends certain COVID-19 measures regarding remote participation until March 31st, 2023. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom. It is being recorded and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others, and that issue wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials also found on the town's website using the Knows Agenda platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. So let's see how much of the town's business we can get done this evening. And next on the agenda is the proclamation honoring Dan Shine. And I'll now turn to my esteemed colleague, John Heard, who deserves full credit for bringing forth this item. Mr. Heard?
Thank you. Is Mr. Shine with us tonight? On, on the Zoom?
Ms. Meyer?
Yes, I'm promoting him now to be a panelist. He should be joining as a panelist now.
Yeah, we can see his name. There he is. Hello, Mr. Shine?
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Heard?
All right. So this is a proclamation we put together. So, Mr. Shine, for those who don't know, was a 44-year coach at Arlington Catholic, and he's been the AD there for, I think, 47 years, if I remember from the proclamation. He retired last year after his 44th season. And last week, on Monday, there was a game at the Arlington Rink, and they unveiled a shirt that's now hanging in the lobby at the Arlington Rink with the number 44 on it to signify his 44 years, as well as the number of his most favorite player that ever played for him, Marcus Moran. No, just kidding. That, that was my number for anyone that didn't pick up on the joke. So, and then it was a nice event, and we had a lot of alumni come back to honor his service, followed by a few cocktails back at the Knights of Columbus. So it was good to see everybody. And he, I played for Mr. Shine, coach for Mr. Shine for a little bit, but as many of you know, my father coached with Dan for about 30 years. So they got an opportunity to relive some of the, some of the stories that they were able to tell in a public setting last Monday. So it was a good event. So I did want to, I do have a proclamation that I put together, just going through some of his many achievements, which I will read. And I should note, I almost, it was a surprise last Monday, which I didn't realize. I almost threw the whole event up by putting that on our lost agenda. But I think I was able to come up with a story that covered my tracks a little bit. So with that, I will move to the proclamation. Whereas Dan Shine is a lifelong resident of Arlington, graduating, graduating from Arlington High School in 1973, being inducted into the Arlington High School Alumni Hall of Fame in 2002, and whereas Dan has served as the Arlington Catholic High School Athletic Director for 47 years, receiving the President's Award of Merit in 2020 to 2021 for the Massachusetts Secondary Schools Athletic Directors Association. And Dan was inducted into the Arlington Catholic High School Quarter Century Club for his distinguished service. And whereas Dan served as the Arlington Catholic Boys Varsity Ice Hockey Head Coach for 44 seasons, retiring at the end of the 2022 season with an overall record of 7, 575 wins, 303 losses, and 83 ties. With Dan at the helm, AC won nine Catholic Central League Championships and three state championships with the 1990 Division Two title, the 1997 Super Eight title, and the 2010 Division One title. And whereas Dan was selected as Massachusetts Ice Hockey Coach of the Year in 1990, 1997, and 2010 by the Boston Globe, and the Massachusetts Ice Hockey Coach of the Year in 1990 and 1997 by the Boston Herald. And whereas Dan was inducted into the Massachusetts State Ice Hockey Coaches Association Hall of Fame in 2015, and has served on the Massachusetts State Ice Hockey Coaches Association Board of Directors since 1983, serving as president from 1990 to 1992. And whereas Dan has served on the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association Ice Hockey Committee since 1979, serving as chairman since 1991, in the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association Board of Directors since 2018. Dan was awarded the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association Coach of the Year for 2021 to 2022, and was selected as the National Boys Ice Hockey Coach of the Year for the National Federation of State High School Associations. Now, therefore, it be resolved that we, the members of the Select Board, do hereby honor and recognize Dan for his many years of service in his distinguished coaching career at Arlington Catholic High School, and proclaim January 23rd, 2023, Dan Shine Day in the town of Arlington. And just as a personal notice, I grew up as the water boy for many years in Arlington. So I got to see Dan at his best, and I played for him, and I coached for him. And one thing I had mentioned last week when I spoke is that what sometimes that separates Dan, I think, from a lot of coaches that you see out there is, he doesn't just care about how you do on the ice, he doesn't care about how you do for the team that he coaches. If you're a player for Dan Shine, he helps make you a better person. He talks to you about what you're going to do after high school, where you want to go. He'll make a call if he can help you in any way to help you get on the path you want to be on. And he's really a lifelong resource. Anybody that ever played for him, or really has known him, can call him 30 years later, and he'll pick up the phone right away, he'll talk to them, and he'll help in any way you can. So it's a lifelong relationship playing for Dan, and it really has been an honor to know him as a kid, as a player, and now as an adult. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. And so, so we, we have a motion on the proclamation, you know? Are we going to get a second or any other comments? Mr. Corsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'll second the motion, and I want to congratulate Dan on, on an outstanding career and for his dedication to Arlington Catholic and, and to the community. And one thing that Mr. Heard read there that I always found to be a remarkable achievement was the 1997 Super Eight Championship that you won. And for those members of the public, that, that Super Eight tournament had started in 1991, and for the first five or six years, it was dominated by Catholic Memorial and BC High, and Dan and his Arlington Catholic team won it in, in, in 1997, beating BC High, the defending champion that year. So just a remarkable accomplishment. And as we look at the proclamation, you won a, a state championship in Division One and Division Two, and in the Super Eight. I've known you for a long time, Dan, and this is a, a well-deserved honor, and I want to congratulate you on that outstanding career and wish you all the best in retirement.
Thank you, Steve.
Mahan?
Sorry about that. Sorry, Coach Shine, I'm, I'm going between the laptop and the phone, so don't take my pointing as anything, but I'm trying to unmute myself. First, congratulations. I think my colleagues, Mr. DeCoursey and Mr. Heard said it best in terms of, yes, you're a coach, but you embody the, the best part of the coach, which is getting well-rounded players and helping them in, into adulthood. And as many of you know, I coached at Arlington High, and one of the things that I was really impressed by and could tell you with Coach Shine's sincerity was with the two high schools we have in, here in Arlington, really fostering a partnership or camaraderie between Arlington Catholic High School and Arlington High School. And I know Coach Shine has helped lots of Arlington kids who didn't necessarily go to Arlington Catholic High School. Sometimes it was just a word of advice in the field when the two high schools met, but other times it was, as Mr. Heard spoke about, thinking about the big picture, long range, and helping them to, to the next step forward. So I can't believe you're retired, Coach Shine. You're really synonymous with not only Arlington Catholic, but the town of Arlington. I really want to tell you, I treasured the very limited opportunity I had to work with you as a coach at Arlington High School, but also helping me sort of partner with Arlington Catholic High School cheerleaders. And we really had a good program going between the two and good camaraderie ship. And that couldn't have happened if you weren't at the helm of that, really, encouraging that and making sure it continued on. So I wish you good health and your family moving forward. And I know we'll, we'll see you again soon. So thank you so much, Coach. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mahan. Mr. Helms?
Thank you. I can't say it any better, so I won't try. But Coach Shine, congratulations on an exceptional career. Thank you for your years of service to the young people of Arlington.
Thank you. Yes, and Mr. Shine, you know, it is hard to follow up on everything everyone has said, especially given the, the history that they're referring to is way before my time in Arlington and me, but, but certainly hearing their praise me makes me, me realize that you are a great asset, I mean, to, to town and, and, and just humanity in, in general. I mean, and I think it says a lot for Arlington Catholic, meaning that you stayed with them for as long as you did, and it's good to have me, great institutions of all kinds here in town. So, so thank you very much. And so before, oh, Mr. Feeney?
Hi, Mr. Shine. I was a former Arlington Catholic student athlete who benefited from your leadership and dedication. I just wanted also to chime in and say, congratulations on your illustrious career. You'll be missed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Feeney.
So before we take the vote, would you like to say a few words, Mr. Shine?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I'm humbled by this honor. Very exciting. As John Heard noted, that he started out with us as a stick boy and running around the rink as a little six, six, five, six, seven-year older. And now I'm so proud of his accomplishments as a, as a Select Board member and also as a, an attorney and, and a husband and dad. And the same with Mr. Feeney as well, another RACI alum we're so proud of. But, you know, John mentioned his dad, Jack coached with me for almost just about 30 years, and, and another lifelong resident, Joe Keefe, who many of you know, I'm sure. Jim Hunt, another Arlington resident for many years, he's now living in Burlington, but he's with us for so many years. And, and John Donato, who started out as a stick boy and moved his way up as well with the program. It's taken many, many people to help me through this journey. I've always enjoyed working with the kids in Arlington, both AC students as well as the high school students. And I feel that we've made an excellent contribution to the community. And I've, I've always felt that we've had two great schools in town and try to promote both of them as much as we possibly can and promote the student athletes as well. My family, I've had a bunch of nieces and nephews that have been on the journey with me from the time they were little tics running around the rink. Now, a couple of them getting married this, this spring. And of course, my wife, Terry, who I couldn't have done it without her support. I think everyone knows coaching is a challenging job these days as teaching, and it takes many hours of the week out of your personal life, but it's, I feel it's been something very worthwhile to me, my wife, Terry, and our family. And I want to thank the, the board for honoring me tonight. I'm humbled by this. And actually, I, I feel speechless because I, I think, I think so much of the community and what Arlington stands for and, and the people that run the, run the town. I'm, I'm so proud to be a part of it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So on a motion to issue this proclamation by Mr. Heard and a second by Mr. Corsey, Mr. Heim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Helms? Yes. Mrs. Mahan, my apologies.
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes, well, everyone was hearing you but me, and now I still hear you very softly. So I think it's on my end, so I'll, I'll figure it out for them next vote. Thank you again, Mr. Shine. Good luck with them. And, um.
Thank you. Thank you all. Very much appreciated.
Right.
Thank you, Coach.
Have a great meeting. Thank you.
So we move on to the third item on the agenda, the Arlington Education Foundation 5K Race on May 21st this year, 2023. We have this Fuller end, and so we were looking for some confirmation from APD, meaning that they were fine with the race. We've gotten a letter, meaning from Officer Reteau, in a follow-up letter regarding the tail this afternoon. And so I'll turn to you, Ms. Fuller, in case you want to say anything, and then I'll turn to my colleague, Mr. Helms, to find out any thoughts from him, and we'll see where we go from there. Ms. Fuller?
Perfect. Again, my name is Laura Fuller. I'm with the Arlington Education Foundation. I thank you for your time this evening. Last, two weeks ago, you asked for some confirmation, and Ms. Mayor from the Select Board Office wrote to both Joe Conley and Officer Reteau at the Arlington Police Department. I had been in touch with them, I just didn't have the written documentation, so they all seemed to be okay. Officer Reteau and I had a little back and forth. He was encouraging us to use the new path on the reservoir for the race. And when I talked to Mr. Conley about that before last week, Mr. Conley was a little concerned that 800 people would create undue wear and tear if we were pushing all 5K races to the reservoir. Last year, we held the race on a Sunday morning at 8:00 AM and didn't really have an issue with traffic or the safety of the number of children in the race. So we, and we are also concerned, using the reservoir, we would need to actually hold four races, after one after each other, one at 8 o'clock, one at 9 o'clock, one at 10 o'clock, because the space on the reservoir just doesn't have that, can't allow 800 participants all at once. So we kind of changed the community feel of the event. So Mr. Conley is okay with us using Hurt Field and, not Hurt Field, excuse me, Hills Hill and the bike path. And, and so we just need to make sure that a police detail is in place, in enough time to direct traffic should we need it, and, and to keep cyclists off the bike path. Based on our experience last year, our, our biggest issue was cyclists on the bike path, as well as just keeping, stopping traffic on crossing the Mill Street Crossing of the bike path. So if we can get support for that, which we are working with the police department to make sure that that is in place, we should be fine.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. Mr. Helms, as courtesy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Mr. Feeney, our deputy town manager, if he has any comments. I know that I asked him earlier today to check in with, with APD, the Police Department and Recreation Department. Do you have any recommendations for us? Very happy to move approval here in a moment. Do you have any recommendations about conditions that we, that the town would prefer us to, to place on approval?
Thank you, Mr. Helms. I wouldn't say that we have any additional conditions that we want to place on the race this year. I think that as further correspondence that was provided from Sergeant Martin showed that we're proposing a three-plus-one detail alignment this year, meaning three officers and a supervisor, so we can better spread out the coverage and provide additional support during setup and operation as they will be traversing some high-traffic intersections. So I believe that will hopefully help address any issues that may have been experienced in the past, and I know that Laura has taken steps to prepare for proper disposition of recycling and has been in touch with Charlotte Milan on that. So from the operational perspective, I'd say we're good to go. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Feeney. And thank you, Ms. Fuller, for your patience and for putting this wonderful event together. Are you comfortable with the recommended police detail in terms of being able to, to work that into your plan?
Yes, I, I, that would be perfect, and we are looking forward to working with the police department on that. I know Mr. Martin suggested a half hour before the race, and we are going to meet with him and Officer Reteau, hopefully within the next month, and maybe make that an hour before the race, just to make sure that we're all set. But yes, that will be fine. Four people is fine.
And just one final question, I noticed that the, the application still has the police detail box not checked. Should we assume in our motion that for the purposes of this approval, that that box would be checked on the application, given, given the commitments?
Yes, Mr. Helms, of course.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I therefore like to move approval, just within addition that least detail and any, any other operational request by the town be complied with.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mrs. Mahan?
I will second that, and I just want to pass along that Scott Smith, who I think is still a member of AVAC, Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee, made the suggestion that Ms. Fuller or someone from the AEF may want to reach out to Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee, perhaps for some, not just coordination, but some efforts to work on keeping everybody safe and also what you referenced about the bicyclists during the race. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome, Mrs. Mahan. And so, yeah, and, and, yeah, yeah. I think their meetings are on the third Wednesday of the month, meaning you can find that on the town calendar. And so any other comments, questions? Okay, and so on a motion by Mr. Helms, meaning to approve, meaning of the Arlington Education Foundation 5K Race on May 24th, with conditions regarding the police tail, and a second by Ms. Mahan, Mr. Mr. Heim?
Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Helms?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Trinamis vote.
Thank you. Thanks for, for putting this together. I mean, it's a good cause, and who knows how big it's going to be next year. So, so, all right. Take care.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, so moving along, you know, we are on, we're on the consent agenda, which has items four and five. The first item, Black History Month banners by Crystal Lane from the Arlington Human Rights, a human, Arlington Human Rights Commissioner. And second is a request special, one-day beer and wine license on January 28th, 2023 at Robbins Memorial Town Hall for a private event. So I imagine we can just move forward with getting a motion in a second.
Move approval?
A motion by Mr. Corsey. Mrs. Mahan?
I will second that, and I also see that we had an agenda for consent agenda with four reappointments. Are we incorporating that in with the other two on the consent agenda? So it would be the Black History Month banners, the request for a one-day beer and wine license, as well as the four reappointments to Commission on Arts and Culture Redevelopment Board, Open Space Committee, and Park and Rec Commission.
Mrs. Mahan, as, as my very helpful vice chair, you are really doing your job. So thank you for, for, for bringing that back to my attention, you know? And so, yes, let's please do, you know, include that. So I'll circle back to Mr. Helms on that motion.
Well, yeah, it is actually, Mr. Chair is actually Mr. DeCoursey on, on the motion. I'll make my, I'll make my motion to, to include the additional appointments.
All right, thank you.
And I'll still second it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And so, so any other comments, questions? All righty, so on a motion to approve the extended consent agenda made by Mr. Corsey and a second by Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Helms?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Trinamis vote.
Thank you. And so now we're moving on to item number six, the appointments, you know, to the Human Rights Commission, term to expire on June 30th, 2025. Kevin Bryant? And, and, see the pronouns, he/him, so Mr. Bryant, and for that title, any of the title, just let me know, okay?
Kevin Bryant's fine.
Thank you. So you want to tell us a few things about yourself, meaning why you want to be in a chair?
Well, I'm a retired law enforcement, police officer of 37 years. I am a affiliated Baptist minister at Memorial Church at Harvard University. I'm also a Harvard University chaplain. I'm also the chaplain for the Newton, Arlington, and Harvard University Police Departments. I am also a recovery coach. Father of six, five young men and one woman. I've been studying martial arts for 55 years. I'm one of Rocky Del Rico's highest-ranking black belts, which is on parka out there at the Campo Carreto. I have a great time traveling with my wife, and I sing in a band, and there is no greater service than service to others. So that is why it's a blessing and a great responsibility I look forward to becoming a member of this panel.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. So I turn to my colleagues. Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I very gratefully move approval on Mr. Bryant's nomination. Mr. Bryant, thank you for your service to the community in so many ways. We are very fortunate to have you as a member of the community in Arlington, and particularly in this really important role you bring, a wealth of amazing experience. I'm just looking at your resume, it's, it's just astonishing, it's diversity and breadth. And you're never bored, I can tell that. And you will, I think that you'll have a great time engaging with the other really interested, interesting people on, on the commission. And, you know, I feel really good that you'll be among the people who are safeguarding the dignity and rights of our, of our people. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. Mrs. Mahan? Thank you, Mr. Helms. Mrs. Mahan?
I I will gladly second that, and I I do want to say to Mr. Bryant, thank you so much for going through your resume, your curriculum vitae, your everything. Thank the Lord you actually have time to commit to yet another thing, along with your better hat. As a Baptist myself, here in Arlington, First Baptist Church, deacon, I I definitely appreciate not only your commitment to interfaith and and worship, as well as your law enforcement background, but but especially on that in Endover Newton Theological. I have, myself have attended over there. I am not a pastor or anything like that, but I do know sort of pastoring to worshippers is going to be a great asset for you. Not only is serving in your role as a commissioner on the Human Rights Commission with the people that come before you, sometimes in really stressful times, in times that they really haven't faced before, and and maybe a little intimidated or fearful with that, but also with your fellow members, sort of a a different route, and and as they have their strengths also, I'm not not saying that they don't, but you have a wealth, a realm, a breadth, all the T H words of experience. I look forward to seeing you on the Human Rights Commission, and I look forward to when the weather gets better and triple E, West Nile, coronavirus, R three, and the flu, settle down for a little while. I I can't wait to meet you in person, sir, and thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you for your kindness.
Any other comments from colleagues?
I can't find the raise hand function on my phone.
Okay, well, I saw you did, and you just jumped in. Okay, so Mr. Heard?
Yeah, I I just wanted, again, thank you for your willingness to step up, your, the breadth of your your knowledge in so many different areas is really incredible. And in this, for this particular committee, I think that will be very beneficial. We rely on this committee a lot, and it is time-intensive and labor-intensive, and your willingness to serve is really humbling. And we appreciate having you on the board, so I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you, John.
Mr. Corsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to echo the comments of my colleagues, and and thank you, Mr. Bryant, for your willingness to serve on the Human Rights Commission and the experience that 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 you will bring to the to to the commission and for your dedication. So thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you, too. Looking forward to working with you, Mr. Corsey.
And so, I mean, all I can say is, wow. Actually, I could say more, you know, and I will, it's like, you know, I I've never seen such a massive name drop. You know, I feel like be one degree closer to a whole bunch of people that never would imagine. I feel one degree closer to, you know, and and all I'll say is that I'm going to run your TV by the members of the Rainbow Commission, and I'm the liaison from this, like, went to that commission, and they are going to be jealous that HRC got you, you know, I, yeah, yeah, I mean, I think you appreciate diversity. Me on a whole nother level, you know, from what I see in that paragraph, because because there are elements in there that wow, just wow. So so thank you. Thank you very much, you know, for for signing up to HRC. I I've I've listened to a number of of HRC meetings, nice meetings I want to, because it conflicts with some other other meetings, you know, but it's really an important group, and they do really good and hard work, I mean, so so you'll be a great asset, and and you'll find a great bunch of people to work with. So once again, thank you. And on a motion to accept Kevin Bryant's membership on the HRC by Mr. Helms, and a second by Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmet?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you all.
So moving on to item number seven, poet, laureate of Arlington, time to, excuse me, term to expire on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, Jean Flanagan. Ms. Flanagan, I mean, any title you want, just let me know. Happy to call you that.
Call me Jean.
Okay, thanks, Jean. And so, want to tell us a little about yourself?
Yes, I've been a resident of Arlington for forty-seven years, and I've been writing poetry most of my life. I went to Northeastern at night, and I've been teaching for the last twenty twenty years at Middlesex Community Court.
Great. Thank you very much. You know, so I turn to my colleagues. Ms. Mahan?
Sorry about that, Ms. Flanagan, Jean. Using laptop and phone, and I'm like, am I muted? Am I not muted? I'd first like to move approval, Mr. Chairman. I I want to thank you for also submitting just a little snippet, six pieces of of your poems, your poetry that that you've written. I I'm very appreciative that you're going to be the poet laureate. It's a position that, when it was first introduced, I listened very carefully to my colleague Joe Kiro at the time, and didn't really grasp exactly what it was, I'll be honest with you. It sounded a good idea, but I certainly have grown to appreciate. I I have heard of you in Arlington in 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 various capacities, so you'll be the second poet laureate of, I think, the four that we've had. Marion Levine was also someone I was familiar with, so it could be Levine. Am I saying it wrong? I think she says Levine. But anyways, I I'm really excited about this, not only fostering what you can in terms of your writings to the town, but any other sort of bridges, the poet laureate. I believe there is one already with our libraries, which I think should definitely continue. But having been in a resident in the town for so many years, I know you'll be able to make this position your own and probably grow in a way that I wish I could make a suggestion to you, but I I don't have the expertise to do that, so I'm going to leave that to you. So I want to thank you for for volunteering to do this. I said to a lot of people, we have people on these boards and commissions that I I'm almost embarrassed. I want to apologize, because you're not receiving any monetary compensation, not that you do it for that reason. I don't know if we could afford you, but but thank, but thank you again for agreeing to do this, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, Ms. Mahan. Mr. Corsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion, and also want to thank Ms. Flanagan for her willingness to to serve as our poet lawyer and for providing your poetry, but also providing what you'd like to do as poet laureate. And one of the things that really stuck out to me was the exploring nature through our parks, and I I can think of a few better places and to to have poetry readings at Monomy Rocks Park and among the others there, but I I see you see that as a place to write new poems, but also have poetry readings. So that sounds very exciting, and and thank you for providing your vision to us as as part of the materials that you forwarded.
Thank you.
Mr. Heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for stepping up to this role. I know it is a fair amount of work that you have to put in, but and so you have to love it to do it, but you you're following the footsteps of some quite animated poets, so but I do look forward to working with you as well. I think the town, the various poetry events, I'll call them, that the town has, a lot of people look forward to, like the haikus on the bike path, or the poetry on the storefronts that I I know I see it in the Heights. I know people like to stop and take a gander and read, and we don't always come across poetry in our everyday life, but it's to put it out there and have poetry readings. I know that we've had poetry readings in the center at Uncle Sam Plaza. It's it's something to look forward to, and it's it's a way for people who love poetry, poetry, and people who may not identify as someone that loves poetry to come up together and hear some good poetry. I, again, look forward to working with you, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Helms?
Thank you. Thank you, Jean, for for going to do this. Thank you for your for your work. I enjoyed his poems, and I I love the range of style and expressivity. For some reason, I'm particularly drawn to clap your hands and dance because of its energy, its brevity, its direction. It just sings to me, and so much of your work does, but so much of it is is also poignant and thoughtful. So this is a well-deserved post. I'm excited about the plans that you have for it. I I love, as as Len said, or or John said, the community has really awakened to the power of the spoken word to poetry. I think that the leadership of of the AC and AC and other leaders have really cultivated a love for poetry in the town, so you're stepping into fertile ground. And I look forward to seeing what you hope to encourage to grow and bloom.
Thank you.
And I agree with my colleague, Mr. Corsey. It's really good to see what you're thinking about doing, and just remember, there's some nice parks out in the east, you know, so and and we like poetry, too. There are a lot of us out here. You know, and I think I think my colleague, well, first off, I have a a question. Am I recognizing your poetry as primarily free verse?
Yes, mostly.
Yeah, and the and the structure, it's, I like the way you shape the, you shape the visually shaped the poems, I mean, so it has that visual aspect to it. So so I think my colleagues all know it's coming, and 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 it's it's seventeen syllable in a five, seven, five arrangement. Poet Laureate. Joyfully, we welcome you. Words become great art. And so with that, on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, and to to appoint you as poet laureate, and a second by Mr. Corsey, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmet?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
We're so close to a haiku there somewhere. We're going to make it work in a real call vote at some point.
I I look forward to that.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Bye.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. So now I need to scroll back over to Windows. Take me, there we go, open forum. Hey, so except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be act upon, nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. And so, Ms. Meyer? What do we have?
It looks like we have one hand raised at this time. I'll be promoting them and sharing my screen for the timer.
Great, thank you.
Oh, maybe two hands now.
Who do we have? Um, Mr. Ward? Steve Ward?
Unmute.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you, Chairman Diggins. Stephen Ward, I'm a five-year resident of the Arlington Housing Authority. And my, I have a written presentation. It's about a page and a half. But I've also submitted it to the Select Board Office in hopes that it would be something that you'd all consider at the next meeting of the of the board in an official capacity. Because what I'm trying to do is petitioning the Select Board's endorsement of a consideration for the issues surrounding the candidate selection for the tenant member of the Board of Directors at the Arlington Housing Authority, which the most recent one, you all selected, a young lady by the name of Fiorella Bedea. The problem, of course, is that the governor has never spelled out in the law exactly how they are supposed, we are supposed to muster up the candidates, which means that the board could have as many as fifty candidates showing up. And this needs to be corrected by Senator Freedon and Mr. Representative Garbali. And all the information I have sent earlier to Chairman Diggins, that concerns most of it, I have left the the detail that I want to really present to you tonight with the Select Board's office, and hoping that they they that they will take it and submit it to all of you for your perusal. This is an important issue, because the Arlington Housing Authority represents over fifty-seven million dollars in in taxpayer property. And it's a four-and-a-half-million-dollar operation that very few people have any idea of what's happening there. Very few people understand this quasi-governmental agency that the town, in its generosity of exempting a tax as it made it tax-exempt, is foregoing more than half a million dollars in taxes every year for this place. And it's, what we need to have is a equitable and democratic selection process for the candidate for the Board of Directors for your appointal, which is coming up in another year and a half. So there's a limited amount of time, both for us to address this and for me to continue speaking. If you would like to hear my presentation that I've written up, just tell me so, and it'll, I don't know, it's a page and a half here to the board that I typed up.
No, we we will read it. We're out of time, you know, we maybe, if you want to come back next week, you can do it in three three minutes, you can, but I I will, I will contact staff, you know, and and we'll we'll take it up next time. So thank you very much for your time tonight, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. You know, next person? Can you just tell me who it is, Ms. Meyer?
Yes, it's Kristen Anderson.
Sanction, you ready to go?
Yes, hi. Thank you, Select Board, Town Manager and Town Council for all your good work. My name is Kristen Anderson. I run a business in the industrial zone in the Heights. I have been in touch with a number of other Arlington businesses located in the industrial zone, and we are concerned about a warrant article that the Redevelopment Board is voting on this evening. We would be at the ARB meeting tonight, except that the ARB will be voting on this warrant article before taking any public comment. The name of the proposed article is ARB Jurisdiction Over Industrial District. I've reached out to Town Council Doug Heim for clarification about this article, and I hope to hear back about it. Our concern about this warrant article is that it may allow the ARB to change the use in the industrial zone to residential. And we worry that existing and future businesses will not be able to compete with residential market rates, and businesses will be pushed out of town. Arlington needs more businesses, not fewer. Local businesses provide jobs. Local businesses provide services and products to Arlington residents, and local businesses provide a commercial tax base to the town. Local businesses play an important role in the community, making for more vibrant and walkable neighborhoods. And so we ask you to consult with Town Council to determine whether this proposed bylaw would allow the ARB to change the use in the industrial zone to residential. And if it does, please support the town's existing and future businesses by voting no action on this warrant article when it is brought before the Select Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Anson.
You're welcome.
Have a good night. So that will be it for open forum. We'll have a second opportunity for people who stay around and maybe have something to say towards the end of the meeting. And moving on to traffic rules in order. Other business, item number eight, recommendation from the Transportation Advisory Commission, and we have, I see this one in the room, so. Hi, Ms. Juan. Thanks for joining us. And you're gonna, you're gonna present this recommendation much better than I could, so it's all yours.
Hello, I'm Laura.
Hello, I'm Laura Swan and I am the Chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee. And we voted this December to recommend some improvements by a crosswalk at Summer Street and Victoria Road, which is right across from Buzzell Field. It's a heavily used crosswalk by a lot of families and people trying to access the field and get to the Minuteman Bike Way. This particular crosswalk has come before tack before. And there was a restriction in the amount of parking in front of the field, basically about forty feet. But there has been sort of a continuing complaints from the residents. People often park in the new parking zone and we took another look at this and came up with some of some more, let's say intensive recommendations of restricting parking even farther in order to create a safe stopping distance for cars approaching this crosswalk. As well as installing a rectangular rapid flashing beacon with a paired beacon ahead that will let cars know when people are trying to use this crosswalk and that the beacon is activated. And in order to sort of really enforce these these no parking zones, we're going to recommend putting something like flex posts and perhaps like striping or in other ways, painting the pavement in order to really indicate to parkers that they should not park right up next to the crosswalk and that this way people will be able to see the cars coming and be able to safely cross and cars will be able to identify when pedestrians are at the curb ready to cross at this crosswalk. I will say that there is a plan for the Mystic River Bike Way to connect to the Minuteman around here at Buzzell Field. And this means that in the near future, probably still several years out, the location of this crosswalk may shift possibly to the other side of Victoria Street. And so another more intensive options like doing a sidewalk bump out just don't really seem appropriate at this time until we know for sure what that connection is going to look like. So please let me know if you have any questions. Oh, I should add that um as part of this sort of restricting parking, there will be five additional spots, parking spaces. Mostly on the south side along the field that will be marked as no parking. So there will be a little bit of, I would say, loss of parking alongside the field, but hopefully this will make it safer for people trying to cross and get to the field.
Thank you, Miss Swan. And so I turn my colleagues. Questions? Ms. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Swan. And please pass on my my colleagues' thanks to the Transportation Advisory Committee, just the detailed report in terms of A identifying current situation as well as coming up with some recommendations. And I appreciate you're also thinking even longer term in terms of the possible connection. I don't know if I call it the trail, the bike way. Known by many names and used by many people in different forms of traveling. So I definitely would move approval. I just wanted to double check, did you say, I'm just going by what's in the report, but I think I heard you just say in terms of the loss of parking, that it would be five spaces.
That's correct. On both sides of the street, there'll be one side on sort of like the north in between the existing driveway and a crosswalk. And then because of sort of the curve of the road, it's any sort of cars parked in front of that crosswalk. Make it so the drivers really can't see pedestrians until they've already, you know, entered the street there. So this would sort of extend that no parking zone and protect it.
And I I definitely agree. I know that when I've driven by there and there's been games Buzzell Field and or Arlington Catholic High School Field. And I see not only our student athletes and our students from both high schools, as well as our youngsters from Buzzell Field, but grandparents and strollers and wheelchairs and walkers and I know when I see all the cars parked on both sides, I just kind of squint a little and say a little prayer going through there. As well as sometimes seeing other cars who get impatient and kind of want to buzz through there. So I I'm definitely in agreement with that recommendation because a lot of the times with S U Vs and and larger vehicles, you really can't see anyone until they step out into the road. Which frightens me to death. So and again, thank, please pass along our thanks to the committee. I know we put a lot on your platter. You don't have a plate anymore. Give me another word for something that's bigger than platter. I'll say that's what we, but it's it's definitely appreciated. And once again, and pretty much all volunteer committee that's bringing their expertise from their day job and helping Arlington make not only safer, but also a community that a lot of people want to get involved in the process. And so sorry to be so wordy there. Thank you, Ms. Swan. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Mahan. Mr. Hurt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for the presentation. I'll second the motion. You spent a lot of time in Buzzell Field and it it can be a little treacherous to cross there. We made some improvements a few years ago, which made it better, but certainly didn't solve all the problems. So I think it's a work in progress and I do appreciate tax efforts on this. I also think unrelated to the, what's right before us. There's a discussion that we can have further about how the permit parking works on the lot on the backside of Buzzell because it, we, I, we're often there on the weekend. And I think a lot of the permit holders use those spots to work during the work week. And there's never anyone parked there during the weekend when Buzzell gets the most use. But again, it's unrelated to this and I don't want to bog down your presentation. But um as it triggered my memory that I wanted to talk about that, I thought I threw that out there so so we can hold my feet to the fire to follow up on it. So again, thank you for the work on this. I think it will make a big help in hopefully we'll continue the discussions to to make it as safe as possible in that location.
Thank you, Mr. Herr, Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yeah, thank you, Ms. Swan for and and all the members of TAC for the for the comprehensive report on on this area. And it is a challenge if you're driving down Summer Street and there there is activity at the park, you get close to that crosswalk and you just can't see people coming out. Just one question, and you mentioned holding off on the the more costly capital improvements, that the flashing beacon is, that that is not one of the more costly improvements, is that? That's, as I read the recommendation, that's being recommended to install in in the short term. I just wanted to clarify on on that point.
Hopefully, as as soon as possible, it would definitely alert drivers and especially we're recommending a rapid flashing beacon that it's paired with a sort of advanced warning beacon. I think there's a similar one on Lowell Street. And so this will give drivers ahead of the curve advance warning that they may need to stop. I did ask our DPW and they said that this sort of beacon can be moved. They can sort of salvage the the footing, they'll leave that concrete in the ground, but they they can move that sort of beacon and simply install a new footing for it if there is a a shift in the future that would necessitate like repositioning that beacon.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. That was gonna be my second question. And and I do see a need for it in the short term. So I'm glad it can be installed sooner and there's an ability to move it. So again, thank, thanks for the presentation and I certainly will support Mrs. Mahan's motion here.
Any comments? Okay, well, yes, I, well, it, you know. I feel as if I can't say too much because I'd be patting myself on the back, but we all know that we everyone else in that committee does a whole lot more work than I do. So I really am complimenting the work that the committee does. I mean, and I'm continuing to learn a lot by being in the committee. And and maybe I just didn't see it mean the first time when we were approving this because sometimes I have to pop out to another meeting, but but that product, including the nineteen seventy two special speed regulation is impressive. Not only that he knew of the existence, but then he went ahead and put it in the report. So so those little details always impressed me. But thank you for the work and the recommendation and and I have asked the Town Manager, I mean, at some point in the near future, me to let us know what happens me when we approve these, me the next steps in so that we've gotten requests from people who've raised these issues. They want to kind of know what happens. And so the Town Manager is going to give us a little bit of a rundown on that. So on a motion by Mr. Mahan to accept the recommendation from TAC for this intersection, you know, his crosswalk and a second by by Mr. Hurt.
Mr. Hurt. Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Helmet.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Thank you. See you around. Take care.
Bye.
Bye. So moving on, item number nine, discussion update fossil fuel infrastructure. So that's over to you, Mr. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I I just wanted to announce on this discussion, I'm sorry, Attorney Hahn. I'm going to be recusing myself from the discussion of the 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 fossil fuel infrastructure. So I just wanted to alert you to that before you began that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Corsi. Sorry, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of this agenda item is really to give the board a general update and answer any questions that the board might have. Did we lose?
Yeah, I was about to interrupt too to say, I mean, so I think we lost her. I mean, and I'm pretty sure that wasn't intentional. I mean, so so maybe we just like wait a couple of minutes, I mean, and see if she can rejoin us, you know, we'll give it a
I I see Ms. Mahan in the attendees list, so I think if she could be promoted to panelist, that might do the job.
Okay. Thank you. There she, there you are. I suspect you can hear us back. Great. Nice, me. So so just in case you missed it, Mr. Corsi, I'm stepping out for this part of the conversation. So, Mr. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of this agenda item is just to keep the board abreast of some developments relative to the town's efforts to regulate the installation of essentially new fossil fuel lines for major renovations or for new construction. The background to this is, as the board may recall, at a special town meeting in December of twenty twenty, town meeting passed both a proposed bylaw and a home rule petition that would allow the town to regulate the installation of fossil fuel infrastructure in furtherance of many, many of its goals, including its zero goals and its general climate change and local air pollution goals. That special legislation essentially was was a an effort that many other communities were engaging at the same time, including some of our neighboring communities like Brookline. Uh, not neighboring communities, nearby communities like Brookline. And the result of that was a municipal fossil free, fossil fuel free building demonstration program, essentially a ten community pilot program to allow communities to have that authority, which otherwise we would not have. Normally fossil fuel are regulated by state law and the Department of Public Utilities. But to allow us essentially the ability to enact a program like the one that Arlington tried to get the authority to enact through town meeting, through home rule petition. There are some conditions on that. I won't go through all of them right now, but just to say that through the substantial efforts of this board, the Clean Energy Futures Future Committee, many dedicated Arlington residents, we have sort of reserved our spot as one of the priority communities that gets to participate in this project. In order to keep going, we have to submit what's called a letter of intent by September first, twenty twenty three. An application by November tenth of twenty twenty three and then have all of our eligibility requirements met by February eleventh, twenty twenty four. Now, again, without going into too much detail, we've already met a lot of those because we've already enacted a home rule petition. We don't need to do it again. But one thing that we do need to do is enact a local bylaw. Unfortunately, the timing of this is all a little bit tricky because the Department of, the D O E Rs promulgated some draft regulations, which was sort of concrete what exactly the town needs to do and when with respect to this program. But those regulations may not be finalized until as late as June of this year. So the only sort of action item right now is those draft regulations have a comment period that's open until February eighth. What we have done, Talia Fox, the Town Sustainability Director, myself and members of the Clean Energy Futures Future Committee have met in an attempt to, I know Mr. Helmet is part of that group, in an attempt to sort of garner a general understanding of what some of the potential issues might be for these regulations. The most concrete issues are things like timing, as well as what level of discretion we're going to have to design a fossil fuel free bylaw for Arlington. And the only major step here really is for us to see whether we want to comment on these regulations. So the board doesn't need to take a vote, doesn't need to do anything necessarily. But if board members want to provide some input or perspective to myself, to Ms. Fox, it would be helpful so that the manager can decide how much we should be commenting on these draft regulations and whether or not we want to have somebody present at the hearing for these draft regulations to just emphasize that it's important that communities like Arlington have been fighting for this authority for some time, have some discretion to regulate fossil fuels as closely to the bylaw that we passed as possible. And also that we have enough time to meet these eligibility requirements because, for example, we have no control over how long it takes for D H C D or for the Municipal Law Unit of the Attorney General's Office to approve certain actions required for us to join the pilot. So I I know it's a mouthful. It's got quite a long, complicated procedural history. But if the board members, if board members have any questions or concerns, I'm happy to answer them to the best of my ability now. But I'm also happy to take any individual feedback the board might have aimed towards the town providing some comment that again ensures the town's rights to join this program are maximally protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. And I kind of got the feeling that Mr. Helms wanted to say something. No? No, okay, all right. You just seem like you're leaning forward with your hand kind of. Okay, you know, so.
Listening intently, that's all.
There you go. You know, so any comments, questions, my colleagues? Uh, Mr. Hahn.
Mr. Chair, if if the board doesn't, has any comments after tonight, please just make sure to provide them to me or to Ms. Fox or the Town Manager. So we can make sure that anything that the board would like to express or like to have us vet with these draft regulations is something that we think about. Like, I'll just give you like a small example. One of the things that Arlington passed in its original bylaw that we wanted to have the authority to enact was an exemption for cooktops, essentially stoves. We wanted to be able to have our bylaw would allow the exemption of that from a, from, from a prohibition on installing a fossil fuel line. The current model regulation that D O E R is promulgated or bottle bylaw that D O E R is suggesting, apologies, doesn't allow for that exemption. We think that these regulations will probably give us some latitude with respect to waivers and exemptions and things of that nature, but that's not certain. And so that's one point that we think could But that's not certain, and so that's one point that we think could could be clarified in the model, right, in the draft regulations so far. So that's the kind of thing that we're talking about. And if board members have any feedback or would like to talk more, please contact my office or Ms. Fox. Thank you.
That's interesting. That is interesting, because I I I would have thought that perhaps people would have been a little more aggressive. Me and not wanted that exemption, because I was also thinking about the the hot water heaters and there's like an exemption for. Units that are twelve thousand square feet larger, meaning that they can eat their water with with gas. And I was kind of wondering, well, can't we just like, can you just use like electric in hot water heaters before? And not use the tanks at all. That said, I mean, I think you have a great commission in in town. And and I'm inclined to to go with me their recommendations. I know you'll be working with them. So so follow their guidance, me, Mr. Hanlon, me certainly certainly talk with me about it and I understand, you know, the rationale. So I'm supportive, I mean, of of what he is in favor of and would defer to his position on things. Because of his depth and breadth of knowledge and and. Probably when this comes forward and needs someone to speak to it, me, you know, I will no longer be chair. Who knows, even if I'll be on the board, you know, but but if I am in a position, you know, to be able to speak on behalf of the board, I mean, I'll be happy. To to do that if the chair at that time, you know, will allow me to do so. Me, so I hope that's enough guidance, at least for now, and if not, you know. I may have something else to say later, unlikely. So um, so you don't need us to do anything, but just, okay.
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. Seems like nothing else. So maybe we can bring back Mr. Corsi. Thanks, Mr. Corsi. Yeah. So we'll now move on to an update on the long range plan. So I will turn this over to my colleague, Mr. Corsi, the chair of that committee, the Long Range Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just to to update board members. Last week, the Long Range Planning Committee met and we've been meeting throughout the the fall and winter. And earlier this month, the town manager issued his budget. And within his budget recommendation is the current five year plan or or. List of projections over the next several years. And and what they show right now is that in for fiscal twenty four, the upcoming year. It's unlikely that we will have a deficit. For fiscal twenty five, however, there is a projected deficit of about two point six million dollars. And then it rises dramatically after that period. We're at the now in the fourth year, back in two thousand nineteen, when we put the the two thousand nineteen override on the ballot. We made a commitment that we would not come back to the voters for at least four years with a request for a a subsequent override. So I'm not here to make a recommendation or or do anything like that. But we are at a point where we're getting close to requiring a discussion. As to the timing and if it is this year, the potential amount of an override. And in talking to the town manager as he presented to the Long Range Planning Committee, because we have a new governor. The governor's budget is not submitted until March first. And so the local aid numbers are not going to be known, they're estimates that are available. But until that budget comes out, that that is a the best indication of of the starting point. And that really goes a long way to determining what the outlook will be in fiscal twenty five. So as as we move forward, Long Range Planning is going to meet on February seventeenth. And then after the governor's budget comes out on on March tenth. Between now and the dates, the town manager will be presenting his budget to us along with a presentation of the five year plan. I imagine that's going to be in one of our February meetings, I'd leave that to the chair. He also is presenting his budget to the Finance Committee on February first. One other thing I would say is part of the long range planning discussion, the board will recall when we did have the last override request. The commitments I I referred to, there was a series of commitments on spending, both on the town and the school side. And and I think, given where we may be going over the next couple of months. The suggestion was made for for schools to think about what type of proposal they would like to make. Would make for commitments that we would have to consider as part of the the over the override. And we'll also need to hear a lot more from the town manager in terms of timing. But did want to update the board and I I would guess, within the next several weeks, we're going to have a detailed presentation from the town manager. Exactly where our our financial situation, where things stand. And where it could go between now and March. And and the chairman, Mr. Chairman, you were at the meeting as well. And you might be might want to add to any other observations you had from from that meeting in the timetable.
No, no, the timetable, you reflected it all perfectly, you know, so so um. He, I I did come out of it with some thoughts, especially about new growth being. And I'll be discussing that a little bit later when we talk about potential warrant articles, you know, this this behind.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me? I don't know if I muted myself.
Nope, he was just fine.
Perfect. I just wanted to ask either the Chair of Long Range Planning. Or Town Council, not necessarily tonight unless they know the answer. But I know the town submitted, I think it was a home rule petition after regarding the town manager. And his or her reporting relative to the budget. And I know, I I believe Mr. De Corsi reported on some conversations that he had and others with the Finance Committee to kind of work that out. I know it was submitted to the state. I have a memory that it may, i- if it hasn't been recently enacted, it should be soon. So I don't know if Mr. De Corsi or Tony Heim have any word on that. If they don't, that's fine. Either one of them could look into it and just forward that information to the board.
I don't have a update at my fingertips. I I know it's been filed and I I believe that it. Apologize, I know that somebody actually gave me an update on this recently and it's it's late in my mind, but I don't remember. I can I can give the answer to that as soon as possible and and let the board know.
If you can, I I have a memory in my head that somebody told me it cleared the last hurdle in the state out that it has passed. So if somebody could just check into that and let the select board know. If that's the case, great. If not, what's the anticipated date is. So thank you.
Mr. Corsi.
I don't know, Mr. Court, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And and yeah, just to follow, that that was enacted. But because of the timing of it, Mr. Poole completed his budget submission on the the preexisting schedule. Required him to to complete that by January fifteenth and and then have the subsequent presentation. So for next year and 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 for this year, because Governor Healy has additional time on the budget. The timing wasn't as critical. Next year it will be, because that will give the town manager additional time. So next next year will be February one.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, and so we will move on to. Item number eleven, update on the town manager search process. That's me. So, you know, the screening committee met for the first time last week. We got twenty submissions. And we have decided that we're going to interview six candidates over two. Two days, February second and and February seventh. And and I think I think we're making good progress here. I mean, I I would imagine, I mean, if we want, we could probably plan on when we might. As a committee, one as a board have in our. Month meeting, you know, to interview the finalists, you know. Thinking that could potentially be, you know, during the week of the twentieth, you know. But just so I'm think about it, we can probably nail something down at our next meeting on the sixth. And and so I'll turn it over to my colleagues for questions, comments. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Helmet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's the expectation for the number of finalists that that will? Does this committee understand what the select board's request is? Have we made a request to, you know, how many? Sort of no fewer than, no greater, no more than finalists that that are turned over to us?
Well, it'll it'll be two or more, you know, I guess potentially zero. I mean, if if we, like, interview everyone, it's like, oh, nothing good here. You know, that's not going to be the case because we 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 had some really, really good applications, but but at a minimum two. Because it has to be, because we're not, we're not selecting, we're screening, you know, and so.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I think I think that we hadn't explicitly had the discussion. I think that it might, I don't know if we need to vote or not, if if we do, if the Chair would entertain a motion, I'd be happy to make one that. My other colleagues are interested, but I think the important point is that. The screening committee, if if we feel like we've given the screening committee enough parameters. And if we want to weigh in on on that question of setting a sort of a minimum or or a maximum. I mean, what what has been in my mind is I'd like to see no fewer than three and no more than five, with a preference to three or four. That's just me. I'm not, and forgive me if if we've discussed this already and I'm just having an early senior moment. But yeah, if my name, like I always feel feel like we need to discuss it or vote on it, I'd I'd leave that to you.
All right, well, I'm not, I'm not seeing any hands, you know. I would say, you know, especially given the folks that are on the screening committee. Me, we are going to bring forth, I mean. As many as we think we should come forward. You know, to be worth me, the candidate's time and and the board's time, you know, so. And I think if we try to. Mandate a number, that could make things potentially a little complex. Especially if we, when it comes time for the names to be made public. Me, things begin to to change, you know. Now, I think we we are sophisticated enough that we could handle that. Me, so if the board definitely wants to set a number, you know, the the screening committee will abide by that. You know, so but. But I think you can, I think you can trust us to 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 bring you forward, I mean. A good number of candidates, I mean, that are worthwhile. This behind.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not that history it takes, but I I know in the past. And I think it has to do with, once it gets to the next level, we have to. Publish, make public their names. But in the previous town manager searches, and anyone who knows more than me, please correct me on this. But in in the previous searches I've been involved with, I'm blanking what it is, three or four. We have traditionally, and I'm not saying we have to, but traditionally have received three candidates' names. But then again, I believe when it gets to that next step, we have to make. We have to make public their names. So I I would be fine with four or five, but I think three. Works as well as. I'd rather make three names public versus five, but I'm not against that either. So I just want to let you know, in the past, traditionally, there's been three, we make their names public and go from there. But again, I'll be guided by whatever the committee puts forth to us. I just would, I just know that the committee also is cognizant, is also aware that. The next step in the process does involve a more public part of that process. So. Three would be ideal, but if you if you come up with more than that, then that's what comes out of the committee. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I want to make it clear what I mean by trust us to, is that me, me, I want you to trust us to make, to allow the select board to make the decision. Me, I mean, we're not going to try to limit the the decisions, I mean, and so so so. That's really what I'm getting at. So, Mr. Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and and I think we all have the utmost confidence in the in the screening committee. And and you know, we're all all pleased to 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 hear that you 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 started and and it it sounds like a great group. I think just to Mrs. Mahan's point, I and I don't want to dictate the exact number. I don't, you know, we don't want to limit to in terms of what would what would come forward. But I I do feel like anything lower than three, I think, becomes potentially a problem. Just because sometimes candidates pull out at that at that last stage. So so three, my experience and earlier search committees and not being in the seat that I'm in now. Is that we've seen three or four. I wouldn't want to tell you this is exactly what we want, but but I I guess I would say that I. I one or two, I think, is is a little bit of a a problem in terms of what comes through for us to consider. And then it's just a comment, and and you are all in the best position to evaluate the the resumes and to conduct the interviews at this point.
Well, just just to be clear, one isn't legal, because that means that we're doing a selection. So so you're definitely getting getting two or more. And but I I will say it's helpful to have a sense of what the what the board thinks would be the maximum number of candidates. You we want to interview, what you think is, I I think not only your preference, but also what you think is is practical. Mr. Heard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to belabor this, because I think we're all in the same place. Yeah, I think three would probably be the minimum that we'd expect. And it would be odd, it feels like to get six. So I think three to five is a good range. And you have some leeway based on that range. And I don't think we need a motion as much as just, I think everyone on the board has expressed that that's. Our wish is to see three to five names come out of the screening committee. And I think we can leave it at that.
In case someone doesn't want to just leave it at that, if you want to see a little bit more, here's your chance. All right, we're gonna leave it at that. And I I I I have my orders and I'm going to present them to the screening committee as such. You know, so moving on to a discussion, potential vote in on overnight parking pilot. And so I'll start this one off, you know, and and just say kind of for the record, you know. I need someone forwarded to be be email, I think from the A-list. And I I just want to say, you know, promise is not a word that I use. You know, uh, uh, me, I I have goals and intents, you know, and and me. At the extent to which those are accomplished, be very, me, that is based on circumstances. Me, me, I always try to achieve my goals, me, I always intend to. But but me, to me, me, promise is a word that's just so laden with emotion. Being and and means that I'm locked into a position. So anytime someone says that, I mean, when as a group, when promised something, you know. It's a mischaracterized, mischaracterization. You know, and so 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 we are being, I think, as transparent in as we can be in this process. Me, and and these meetings are all unrecorded, people can look at them. I mean, I think we've laid out a a kind of timeline to when we want to make a decision. You know, and that's at the last meeting in February twenty seventh. Me, and so at the previous meeting, I'd said that we would discuss two items. Meaning that I think we need to flesh out, you know, or or resolve, you know, for determining what the nature of the pile is going to be. The first one is whether it's going to be tom wide. Me, and the second is is the amount that we will charge for a permit. You know, and so so I want to open discussion up to those two issues. Me, in this segment, but before moving forward, I want to turn to Mr. Corsi to see if he wants to say or add anything.
Uh, yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just on your point on 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 promises and and I go back. I go back to the the very first discussion I had on this when back before I was chair even. And in talking to people, I made no guarantees as to where the board would end up, but what I did guarantee is that there'd be a discussion about it and and and. That certainly is what we're having here, so I I'm in agreement with you in terms of the. The whole, you know, whether it's a promise, or, you know, we we'll go through a process here, we make recommendations. But at the end of the day, it's the full board that decides this, and and you've put this on the agenda several times, and and we've had discussions on it, and I think that's. That's where we are, there was, in my recollection, there was no guarantees as to what was going to happen, but we were going to talk about it.
And 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 certainly, our goal and our strong intent is to have another forum, be certain, when we have. As many details as we've worked out, and then get input from from residents, being as to what we're thinking and and perhaps change based on input. Mr. Heard.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just jump clear, you want thoughts on those two issues right now?
Yeah, yeah, and I think if we're going to focus on one, it would be maybe whether we do townwide or. Or or not, you know, because I think that'll be the easier one, and then the harder one, I think, will be. Whether and how much to charge for a permit. So yes, those two.
Famous last words, we'll see if that is easy. I. I think I've put some thought into this, and I know you you both have. Put a lot of work and talked to a lot of people on this, I mean, I. Think that it should be townwide pilot, just because eventually. If it gets, whether it's ballot question, or we decide if it's going to be a permanent change, I think it would have to be townwide. Because if we put it just in one geographical location, I think that we we hear a lot of noise from people that. Aren't in that location that have issues with it. And I think if you're going to do a pilot, you want to get the best, most accurate results that you can from the pilot. And it could be a situation where you limited to East Arlington, and then. It's a wild success in East Arlington, and then we have a ballot question, and it gets turned down again. So I think to get the right data. It should be a townwide pa- pilot. I do think. There should be some sort of a fee. I can't, I I don't know if we can hammer out in a meeting exactly what that would be. But, you know, my understanding is this is. Instead of just lifting of the overnight parking ban is more of a relaxing of our. Our requirements. To issue overnight parking stickers, right now it's very strict and very hard to get an overnight parking sticker. This is us saying that, you know, come to us and we'll give it to you. And I think in order to do that. You should have some sort of a fee just to make sure, because we don't want people that. Don't necessarily need to park on the street, to park on the street, just because it's more convenient when they have just as easy. Parking spaces in the in their driveways, and I think some sort, even if it's a nominal fee, I don't think any fees that we charge are exorbitant, even for the. The parking lots that we have, last time I checked, it was about a dollar a day. But if we come up with some sort of a fee for the permit, that. Limits it to the people that need it, and again, that's what gives us the most accurate results. Whereas if we don't charge a fee for the permit, but we're eventually going to charge a fee. Down the line, it's apples and oranges when we're trying to look at how how well the program was received. So those are my two thoughts.
Thanks, Mr. Heard, Mr. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Heard said exactly what I was thinking, so I won't go on and on and on, but. I definitely think it should be townwide for the pilot, and I definitely think there should be a fee because even for the pirate pilot. Because if there was not one. I think it would taint the study, taint the pilot in the fact that, as Mr. Heard said, everybody might just say we can all park. On the street overnight now, if there's no fee, and that doesn't really give you a true census of. People that actually are going to or actually do need this because they don't have any other option, if there's a fee. As Mr. Heard stated, it indicates intent more. So, yes, townwide, yes, fee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You as my. I think, Mr. Helmuth, yeah, I was hoping you want to chime in, it's not, wasn't going to force it, so thank you.
This is one where I definitely want to listen to my more experienced colleagues first. But I agree on both points. I think with respect to the fee, sorry, our good DPW is making noise outside, plowing my street. Thank you for that, all of you. I I've been thinking about the fee, and, you know, we don't know what's going to be, of course, but. I'm open to being talked out of this, but I I right now feel like it should cover the cost. The incremental cost, if there's going to be a cost of administering a a much larger permit program. So for me, I need to know. Is a little chicken or egg, because we don't really know what the demand is going to be, I think we can expect it'll be substantial, but but that's a guess. So I'm glad I don't have to guess what what the uptake will be, but we do need to at least. Make an educated guess, an informed guess about what what the uptake and workload will be for. For administration of it, and I would really want to see a very thorough analysis of that, so that we understand what we're getting into, so that we are confident we can do it. For me, tying that to the cost of the stickers is is pretty important, given the presentation we just had about the long range plan. And the need for a pending override. Again, I don't have, I'm not, it's not a hill I'm going to die on, but I would feel better about. Administering a new service or a new program that that is, you know, it's it's a new thing, it's an optional thing that people don't have now. That the fee would reflect the the cost, the cost of that service, because not everybody will use that or necessarily needs to use that. So that's kind of my thinking about that. I look forward to hearing more from the community and from my colleagues about that. And. I think beyond that, if I can color outside the lines just a little bit, I I like, I I think that, you know, if. I am very comfortable that this should be a select board decision, I think, what I understand for the history of this is that it's a complex issue that we heard, and even in the first forum and in past conversations, that. There are people with sincerely held beliefs that differ on this. I heard in the last forum that there's a lot of listening and understanding going on between those people in each position, too. But I think it is our decision. I think. As one of the five people making that decision, I would welcome the opportunity to hear more from the community in a structured way. To another forum, I don't know if it's a survey, I I know what it is, I'll leave that to you, Mr. De Corsi and others, working on this. But that's kind of what I'm looking for before I'd be prepared to make a decision of whether even we do this. Is um. Is then the operational details of the permit program, what's really involved, and we're really sure we can do it. The final thing I would say, too, is. Encouraging us to really be serious about a pilot. And I I think so that it doesn't just become a de facto policy that we go into any good pilot program. With a clear idea of what we want to learn. An operationalized idea of what that means, what are we going to look at, you know, a list of things. What's going to be success or failure? How do we define that? What kind of outcomes are we going to, are we expecting? It's okay for some of that to be open-ended, because that's the nature of of this, but I would just encourage us to be very thoughtful about that, so that we can say to the community. And defend why this really is a pilot program and not kind of a soft launch to a to a permanent product. But that we really would, pardon the cough drop, that we really would take this. Seriously and and look at what happens before we decide whether to make this a permanent program or not. Thank you.
Mr. Corsi, do you want to go next, or you want me to?
Um, yeah, I'll just go, and and I think. Thank you to to our colleagues, when Mr. Poole had presented the memo last meeting, that was the first. Opportunity for our colleagues to take a look at some of the recommendations, and now I think it's safe to say that there is consensus. That it should be townwide. One one thing I want to ask you, Mr. Chair, maybe for for input from from our colleagues as well. One other issue that had come up in the discussions that Mr. Poole had with the department heads. Is whether we do this on one side of the street or two sides, and and I think. In addition to the fees, which I I think there's some more analysis that probably needs to take place before we set on an amount, but. I I would wondering, the consensus of the department heads who met with the town manager was that it should be a one-sided, one side of the street. Program for the six months, but I don't know if any of the members have any. Thoughts on that or any, any, you know, how how that strikes them.
Well, my recollection from last meeting was that we had decided on one side, and that's why there were just these two outstanding issues, I could be dreaming, you know. And certainly, I if my colleagues wanted to chime in on that one, we can go around the horn, you know, so I'll start with some.
That's great, yeah, no, sorry, I missed that, that's, if that's, if that's what we did, then 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 fine.
But 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 still, listen, maybe they can tell me whether I'm streaming or whether. This is mine.
I don't know if we were dreaming at the last meeting or this meeting, but I agree with one side. Thank you.
Mr. Helmuth?
I dream of a one side.
Mr. Heard.
Yeah, I mean, I think we talked about one-sided, and I think most towns, season towns do odd even parking, so. You know, odd years, odd numbers, even years, even numbers, and make it simple. Confusing, we'll do odd uneven years. I think generally people will know when they see which car, side of the street cars parked on, and then they'll figure it out.
Is that like when the the word is like green, but its color is red, and you're supposed to like. Okay, so 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 then, Mr. De Corsi.
Yeah, oh, no, no, nothing further.
All right, you know, so. So with respect to. How much, we so as I think this this to her noted, I mean, this is a dollar day which we use a lot. I work with Ms. Meyer, need to get some data on what's going on in the lots, being and we have right now, the. Forty-six users, me, forty-five, you take out the employee that's using it, and and of those forty-five, eighteen. Be or or not charged, because we have a process by which people can prove hardship, and then they're not charged for it. So that's roughly thirty percent, you know, that, you know, not paying, I mean, roughly, I mean, three hundred sixty, four hundred dollars. A month, you know, so my inclination, me, would be, be to keep the permit. At that level, I mean, roughly four hundred dollars a year, a hundred dollars a quarter, because. We we don't want to encourage people, we who don't need to use street parking to do so. We we do have a program, I mean, by which we can handle hardship, I think the question now is is whether it is just an all or none. Type program being, or do we try to scale it in some way, you know, or or increment it in some way that will add complexity to it, you know. We don't know what the man is going to be, you know, we just don't know, you know, and and so. We can maybe try and get a sense of that, I mean, at the next forum, which I, which I'm tentatively thinking, I need to circle back to. Mr. Corsi on this could be on the fifteenth, you know, a Wednesday after. Yeah, the Wednesday, I see Mr. Mr. Heinz hand up, so I'm gonna stop.
Mr. Stevens, maybe I misunderstood, I apologize if I did, but I just want to be clear that when we set a fee associated with something, it's supposed to be tied to the cost of. Of basically administering the fee, so one of the things that we should. Have calculated is what do we think it's going to cost to run this program, at least our best guess, because we can't raise revenue, nor can we necessarily. Have a goal to be just to discourage somebody from engaging in a particular activity. By setting a fee at a certain level, so what we want to try to do is capture the costs, and if the costs are high. We could certainly allow them to be high, because they probably will be, you know, somewhat significant in terms of enforcement. Or you can sort of artificially depress them, just want to try to make sure that if there was anybody who was going to say. What is this fee anchored to? We'd say, well, this fee is anchored to our best estimate of what will cost the combination of town departments to essentially administer this program.
That's good to know, you know, so, so I I need to explore. Me, the con- the the consequences aren't quite the right word for the ramifications of that, you know, in terms of. Just overall goals of the town, because for me, the goal isn't to raise revenue, it is more to not increase, I mean, the desire for people. To utilize street parking when they aren't now. With, because because the costs of that are detrimental, but we can, I don't think we'd really tie it to. Be a specific cost of the town, it'd be more be of a movement away from the what we consider be sustainable. You know, transportation, you know, and and a sustainable living, as in planet, so Mr. Mahan.
And just very quick, and I apologize if I. Wandered off in my mind, but I I know we're discussing agenda item thirteen, and I don't think we're doing a vote tonight. Did I miss, are we? Going to do agenda item twelve, do we still have two items under that, or did that get tabled, and I wasn't paying attention?
No, Mrs. Mahan, I skipped it, I'm sorry, it was, it was.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It was a mistake on my part, I I I inadvertently skipped it, you know, so and and I.
No, that's fine, no, I see the town clerk on the on the on the participant, and I'm sure she's really intrigued by our discussion on this, and. Would probably be equally intrigued on agenda item fourteen, but after this, if we can go back to twelve, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 in my exaggerated look, it's like, yeah, I can't believe I missed it, you know, but but me, my eyes just aren't the best, and I really did miss it, so thank you, you know. So we'll certainly circle back to that really quickly, I think, because. We're not, I don't, I don't think we're going to get to a resolution on this one now, and certainly, what Mr. Heim has said has made me like, I need to, I need to think this through some more, you know, because. We need to, yeah, just need to take it through some more. Any other comments? All right, well, look, I mean, it was easy, Mr. Heard, you know, we did do the the townwide part of it, so. It's all two down, just that one big one to go, and and I need to do some. More research, meaning to find out, because because, yeah, anything more, I'd just be repeating myself, so, all right, thank you for that, and so we're going to circle back to item twelve. Discussion and potential vote on select board warrant articles, meaning and so. I guess this is a point where we talk about the things that. Any of us may want to put on the warrant is coming from the select board, but I'll I'll turn to Mr. Heim to maybe just kind of set. Maybe the table for us on this, I mean, I didn't, I didn't prepare you for this, Mr. Heim, so if you have nothing to add, that's fine, we'll discuss it ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, this item is only on for the. To the extent the board wants to take a vote to place an article on as representative of the whole board's desire to have a discussion on a certain item on the warrant. The warrant doesn't close till January twenty seventh, end of this week, certainly if there are other articles, I would encourage you to, I let the town manager know that you want something else in the warrant. This article is for to the town clerk, the chair asked, that I I put on for discussion, and. A number of members of the board have asked to have a discussion about amending the Town Manager Act with respect to the term of appointment. For an interim or acting town manager, should a town manager not fulfill their three-year contract cycle. So folks have any questions about. Either one of these things, I'm happy to talk sort of procedurally about what these articles represent, what they don't. But otherwise, it's obviously up to the board what they want to put on the warrant as coming from the select board. Thank you.
This is mine.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to try to. Derail anything, but. My feeling is. Until the warrant closes, I don't think we should be voting what we approve or just or don't approve of. As a warrant article, only because of. The the concern that someone might say, well, traditionally, the board has waited until warrant articles is closed, the board has up until the. Actual warrant goes to the printer. To put in warrant articles, and. Um, to put in warrant articles and um, my concern is that if we. Basically are conducting a warrant article hearing and then voting on a particular warrant article. A resident or residence and or a business, Arlington business, if it's applicable, could say um. That it might appear that we changed course from what we're doing, that they weren't anticipating. That we were gonna hold warrant article hearings, take votes um, even before the warrant has closed. I don't want anyone to say, you know, I didn't get my opportunity, I really wanted to speak on that to the board, to vote for it, to not vote for it. Um, you've never done this in the past where the warrant hasn't even closed yet. And you had the warrant article hearing and voted whether or not to support something or not support something, so. And and that is in no way a uh indication of approval or disapproval. On the two that are before us, but the board does have up until the warrant goes to print, which is about three. Plus weeks after the uh public announcement of the warrant closes at the end of January, so. Um, I know we discussed it, I know the town clerk here tonight, so I don't want to circumvent or 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 stop anything, but. I I know we've already had a discussion on it, um, but I I guess I would say to my colleagues. I'm I'm really uncomfortable with voting um, on any warrant article where the warrant hasn't closed yet and and anybody. Who's thinking, well, I'm gonna wait till the warrant closes, cause then they schedule the hearings, cause I really want to speak to them on a particular warrant article. Um, I don't think we should be voting any tonight, so thank you, Mister Chair.
Any other comments, questions? Mister Helmes.
Uh, thank you, my question is actually for town, you know, for attorney Heim, there he is, I walked into it for a moment. So my going into this realizing um, I'm newer member was that we needed to. I I I watched it back up and say, I completely agree with my esteemed colleague that we would not be holding a warrant article hearing tonight. And voting on a main motion. Uh, I see a difference between voting to put an agenda item on the warrant and and. Voting what, you know, having the hearing of what that would be, uh, but I say that just because my assumption coming into this is that we actually needed. To take a vote before the warrant closes in order to place a select board item on on the um, agenda. I I do like the idea of of putting both the town clerk's uh position and the town manager act. Uh amendment before town meeting, just as a, because I think those are important questions for coming to decide. So uh, I guess my question would be for attorney Heim, what, you know, if you could lay out your understanding of what our options are with respect to. When the select board can put items on the warrant.
Mister Chairman, thank you. The yes, so I I'm not, but I'm not suggesting that the select board is taking a vote. On the substance of any warrant articles and moving positive action. The question or the agenda item before you is whether or not the select board wants to sponsor these two articles. On the town meeting one. As folks may recall, when you look through the town warrant, um, there's a bunch of articles that say inserted. By the select board at the request of the town manager, inserted by the select board at the request of the clean energy future committee, or inserted uh by the select board at the request of. Some other entity, usually like the town treasurer or someone like that. I think the, these two articles are are there to see if the town, uh, if if the select board wants to sort of say that these articles were from us. If select board doesn't want the articles to be from you, somebody else can request them uh be put on the warrant. Uh, but if the select board wants these articles to be put on the warrant uh by the select board itself, um. Uh, that was, that was my recollection of the process that we've been engaging in, but um, but I'm not suggesting, and I think we're all in agreement, that this is not. Uh, gonna be a warrant article hearing where any action that the board takes to put an article on the warrant would be uh. The same thing as moving positive action on a warrant and having some sort of motion in front of.
Thank you, Mister, thank you, Mister uh Attorney Heim, um. So I personally am fine with the idea of of our voting to place. The agenda item, you know, to place these on the on the warrant, I'm not gonna make a motion on it until I hear from the rest of my colleagues, so I think that, you know, consensus is is. A worthwhile goal here in this.
Okay, Mister Thomas, anyone else want to say anything? Mister, Mister Corsi.
Uh, than, thank you, Mister Chairman, and um, I have a a a question too, I mean, I I will say just for myself, having gone through. The search or the negotiation process and all of us having gone through the process with the town manager. I individually, you know, whether it's tonight or whether it's a date that we can do in the future, I personally would ask that that the. The town manager warrant article be put on, because I I do think there's some things, some issues with section twelve of the Town Manager Act that that. We should consider, and I I don't have anything to put before the 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 board, I do have a question on the. On the town clerk warrant article, at the last meeting, I think there was some discussion whether, whether it's tonight or whether it's another night, whether this should come from the. Select board or whether this should come from the town clerk, um, or or eh, I I think town clerk would be the other in in individual. And I think that was part of the discussions, I don't know, aside from from timing, and I think Attorney Heim said that. That warrant articles can come from other uh department heads, and we've seen things come from the treasurer, we've seen things come from the town manager. I just want to make sure that we're okay in terms of timing, that if we don't take action this week to add these, that we can add them. At another time, and if there is some issue on the timing, I'd like to let it be known in the town manager. Warrant article, I I'd make a request tomorrow, Attorney Heim, to put that on, um, so, you know, if there's any issue on January twenty seventh. Whether that request has been made.
Mister Chairman, man.
Yes, please, let's, this was.
Yeah, I I mean, I think there's a little bit of tension with 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 respect to what may have been long time. Uh, board practice once upon a time and 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 what we've sort of been doing for the last. Uh, number of years, um, the the, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is if. The board wants to vote to put an article on the warrant as being requested by the board as a public body. That's an action that you can vote on to take, if you want an article that maybe it's not something that's ready for you to discussion. And you want to see if it can be requested at the request of the town manager, it's just kind of a funky thing, select board controls the one. But as you guys go through any warrant that you that you've had, you'll see that there are articles that are requested at. At the request of the town manager and the capital planning committee, for example, usually other bodies will take a vote to say, we'd like to have. These certain articles placed on the warrant, um, or articles from a town staff member will usually get submitted. Uh, by the, you know, close of the warrant, just so we've got everything ready by the close of the warrant. In the annual town meeting cycle, it's important to remember that there's always a special town meeting within it, so uh, if there's anything the board wants further time to consider. Or develop, uh, the board has also oftentimes uh put in uh articles through the special town meeting warrant. If they weren't quite ready to be voted on by the close of the end of town. Does that answer your question, Mister Person?
Yes, thank, thank you, Attorney Heim.
This is behind.
Sorry for being uh, sounding Mahan tonight, um, I just want to say to Mister Decorsi, uh. Regarding the town clerk warrant article, um, that was presented at our last meeting, um, and it was posed to the board. I'm I'm a long way of saying your memory is correct, um, it was posed to the board, does the select board want to put this in? Nobody made a motion, and I know I was very clear where I said, and town council can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm kind of surprised. Back on again tonight, and I don't want to waste the town clerk's time, but I do remember saying, I'm not, you know, I'm not hearing a motion, I don't want to make the motion. Um, because traditionally, if something's put on by the select board, it's sort of inherent, that means we're supporting it. Um, and I'm not speaking for any of my colleagues on any warrant article, but and then I do know I posed the question that. If A was my feeling, this should come from the town clerk and B, I'm pretty sure that's been done in the past, this doesn't have to come from the select board. The town clerk clerk could put this on, and I'm pretty sure town council um verified that, yes, and that that's sort of how we left that one. Um, and and then as far as um, i- if people want to change the process, um. Um, my fear is we're gonna, we're starting to double of doing everything, that uh. I know town council is saying the board can vote tonight to submit a warrant article. Yes, we can, but again, I've cautioned to wait until the warrant closes, because. A, if uh the select board takes a vote tonight, and I agree on the town manager warrant article a hundred. And eighty two percent, whatever the new over one hundred percent thing is, you're supposed to say, um, but it. You know, if we vote to put it on before we. I- if if we're saying, well, no, you're only voting tonight to say that you're gonna vote to put it on the agenda to have a warrant article hearing. We're doubling the work, um. I don't think we should vote anything tonight to be put on, submitted from the select board. To go to town meeting until we're pro- we probably pro- had properly noticed that. This is the warrant article hearing for warrant A, B, and C for town clerk, for town manager. Uh, clarifications, et cetera, um, so yes, I agree with town council, we could vote to say, oh, the board's gonna put this in as a warrant. Articles submitted as the board, then post a warrant article hearing, then take a vote, which we could run, that it's a. Five A vote against a warrant article that we've submitted, so. Um, a long, long way of saying sort of what I said in the beginning, which was, I believe we already had discussion on the town clerk. Uh, and we encouraged the town clerk to submit that, which I assume would be after the warrant closes, um, maybe not, and. Um, agree with you on the town manager, but I I don't see how we could take a vote to say, oh, we're we're not holding the warrant. Uh, uh, warrant article hearing tonight, we're just voting to put it in as a warrant article hearing. I I think it's just doubling our work and what if it says inserted at the request of the select board, and then there's a five, five O vote against it. So, uh, we we've never really done this in the past, we usually get all the warrant articles in, board submits whatever they want to. Do warrant articles, warrant article hearings get scheduled February, March, and have the hearing vote, so, um, thank you, Mister Chair.
Name is one, Mister Hurd.
I guess my head's spinning a little bit with the discussion, which it does sometimes with warrant articles, um, attorney Heim. Do, in order to have a hearing on this, does the select board need to have a vote to put this on? The warrant?
The vote that you'd be taking tonight is to put an article on from the select board.
Yeah, no, I get that.
So you still have to, you you still have to have a warrant article hearing, if you want substantively discuss what you want the motion to be. Um, so there.
I guess my point is, looking at it the other way, does the select board have to take a vote in order for us? Do we have to take a vote as being requested for us, from us, in order to get to that warrant article hearing? And if I'm not being clear, then.
If, thank you, I'm sorry, Mister Chairman.
Yes, please.
If you want the warrant article to be from you. Um, I think what I've tried to explain is that there's a couple of different ways in which a warrant article can appear on the warrant, I think what Miss Mahan has explained well is that. Um, if you don't think that the the town clerk article could come from somebody else, um, but if you want it to come from the select board. Then you should take a vote to put it on the warrant as something the select board wants to be on the one. If, yeah.
Okay, I, I guess my thought is. I don't really care who it says inserted by in the warrant, I think people are gonna take the substance. Of the warrant and we have to do a warrant article hearing anyways, I think there's been plenty of instances where there's been select board members that have. Wanted to put something on the warrant and then voted against it, um, so it seems like. If we don't, it creates another step for someone else when we can just take a motion tonight.
Mister Helmes.
Thank you, um, I think with respect to amending the Town Manager Act, um. For the purposes of of, I believe it was uh Mister Decorsi says section twelve to, you know, to to reexamine the. The procedures with with um, what to do when the town manager resides. Um, I'd like to make the case that that should be placed by the select board. And and maybe it's a bit of a special case rather than the town manager or asking, you know, uh, town council or somebody else to to do that. Because that's our hire, and I think that we, I think it looks really reasonable for the for town meetings. Would might think it's unusual if anybody else but the select board were to formally put that on the agenda. The and and for me, that's just saying, we recommend looking at this. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we do that tonight as a select board. Uh, and my motion will be, you know, asking town council to draft appropriate language, again, just as an agenda item. Um, not anything to do with the merits of should we or shouldn't we, and and not anticipating what the recommended vote would be, uh, but I just want to get it. On the warrant, um, with respect to the town clerks, um, I um, will defer to another member if they want to make that motion. I think it'd be fine uh with with doing so, uh, but I'm cognizant that the the town clerk herself could could uh request that to be put in the mode. On the on the warrant, I think that would be uh fine and appropriate too. The last thing I would say is that regardless of of past practice in years past, I know that more recent uh years. You know, when when the warrant closes, we generally respect that and mean that the warrant closes, and I would prefer to. Avoid confusion on the part of the public that things are being added to the warrant after we, after the warrant closes to the public. So uh, my preference would be that we do what we're gonna do um, before that date and and keep that nice and clean. I am aware that we do have the option, as Attorney Heim reminded us of the special town meeting that's embedded in in the spring town meeting, so we have another crack at this. Uh, but there, uh, nonetheless, my my motion for the town manager one is on the table, Mister Chair, thank you.
Alright, thank you, you know, um, so we do have that motion, Miss Mahan.
I'd like to second that, thank you.
Alright, uh, so um, discussion. Alright, so I have some questions, I guess Mister um, Mister Heim, me, so. Any select board member could put something on the warrant. As an individual, but not have to get signatures because that person is a member of the select board?
Mister Chair, what my interpretation would be is that if somebody wants to place something on as an individual, really as an individual, you should go and get. Uh, the requisite number of petition signatures, and I'll see that happen from time to time, uh, for different folks who want to do something. Irrespective what their committee or mission or board, whoever wants to put on. The select board obviously is the chief uh executive officers, you know, has conduit to the town manager, to other folks to say, hey. You know, do we have a warrant article on X, Y, Z, and the town manager typically requests a lot of the warrant articles on the one. And so, again, things that are requested by everybody else, the select board controls the one. Uh, are usually phrased in some version of requested by the rainbow commission. Or inserted by the select board at the request of the town manager, things of that nature, so I guess what I'm trying to say is. If there's something that you think needs to be put on the warrant, that's not necessarily coming from the select board as a body. You still have the ability to communicate that to the town manager, and if it's something that's appropriate for the town manager request, you can put it on, the town manager can. Basically put it on the warrant, manager's request, all I'm saying is that if there are things that the select board wants to talk about in the warrant. Um, you can put an article on, uh, as we're suggesting in Mister Helmet motion, Mister Helmet's motion. Um, to say, the select board wants to have this discussion about this item on.
Alright.
And you're taking a vote as a body to do.
But the, but the member select board could go through the town manager and get it on that way, is what I hear you say.
If it's appropriate for the town manager, sure, you you I you couldn't do that for like a zoning bylaw.
Right.
If you wanted a zoning bylaw on, you can talk to the redevelopment board, but that's ultimately up to them, if you want something put on by the finance committee, the finance committee has to take a vote on that.
Right.
If you want the town manager to request, you know, something from the town manager, the town manager's just gotta put the manager's title.
Right.
Make sure that's important.
Alright, I mean, so I'm trying to get it, it's like, I I can't figure out how we as a body determine. What's going to go on the warrant is coming from the select board without having a discussion about it. Be which isn't a hearing in um, per se, me, or official hearing, but. In, um, per se, me, or official hearing, but it is de facto a pre-hearing on the matter. Meaning, so we are be kind of coming to some kind of agreement that it should be on the art, on the on the warrant. Now, for me, I can support having something on the warrant and I'm saying, I'm just supporting having it on the warrant. I'm not saying anything about how I'm gonna vote, eh, but if that's being interpreted, I mean, as support for it. Me, then I can certainly see how that leads. Other residents, maybe even other res, even members of the board to go, well, you said, put it on the warrant, I mean, aren't you supporting and now you're not? That's so confusing to them and seemingly contradictory. Me, so it seems to me that if the select board is going to put something on, you know, then we need to have some kind of a discussion. Whether that results in a vote or not, I guess is a whole, uh, other thing, I mean, and and just going back to my early, my my. One-term history on the board, and I think, eh, for the special town meeting that we did in September twenty twenty. I mean, I came to the board and said, I want to have this article, I mean, to create a study committee, I mean, for, uh, using an advisory board. Cause I wasn't be, I I felt that I needed to get the temperature of the board. I don't remember we had a vote on it or not, maybe didn't, people just kind of expressed general support for it. And I felt good about going ahead because I certainly wasn't gonna put an article on the warrant, only to have it come to a hearing and get a smackdown, you know. Uh, at least smackdown by just the nature of its existence as opposed to having thought about it, you know, and decided, well, that's not as good a day as we thought it was. So, so I guess what I'm getting at is that, I guess we do need to have a discussion, I mean, to get a temperature, you know. And whether that results in a vote or not, I guess, isn't as important, but I guess maybe we do have to have a vote if someone's gonna move ahead confidently with putting on the warrant. And, um.
Mr. Diggins, may I just, for the, for, Mr. Chairman, just to be crystal clear, i- if the board wants an article on to be from the entire board. It should take a vote to say, we want this article to be put on the warrant as from us, not from somebody else. All I'm trying to suggest is that, you know, there are other avenues the board members may have if they feel like there's something that needs to be put on the warrant. But it should be appropriate to what the subject matter is. So i- if you can, if there's something that you want to talk to the town manager about, great. But if it's something that really bears the, for the reasons that all of you have political wisdom that that I don't possess or pretend to possess. Would be confusing to folks with respect to placing something on the warrant that you don't support, but that's up to the wisdom of this body.
Right, right, so, I mean, I guess my my feeling is that we can put something on it, even if we don't really support it. I mean, we just support the merit of it being on the, on the warrant. I mean, and so, so my sense is even if you don't support, let's take the clerk, being, um, article, I mean, even if you feel that you're going to not support it. Me, you can at least support its existence on the warrant, you know, so. I guess I'm finally taking votes on getting these things on the warrant, I mean, without them being votes, I mean, on the merits of the article. Cause it seems like that's what we're doing anyways, I mean, so, um, so I did not hear a second, I mean, for, um, Mr. Helmuth's motion. Ms. Helmuth, oh, man, I guess, Ms. Mahan, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot, Ms. Helmuth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, just just to reiterate, my understanding ju- is, that's what putting something on the warrant is, it's an agenda item only. Um, the decision about the board's position, the board's unrecommended vote happens during the warrant article hearing and subsequent votes. So this is merely, uh, to me, representing that we think this should be on, on the agenda. Um, I have not made a motion for the, for the clerk's, uh, position. I think that I would look to one of my other members to amend my motion if they want to do that and if they don't, I'm happy to let my motion stand the way it is. Because again, I think that consensus is is important here.
Alright, well. I'm not seeing a hand to, uh, make an amendment, so before I forget the motion a second, again, let me just like, get this one done. Be so, uh, a motion, uh, to, uh, for the select board to put an article regarding the, um, changes to the Town Manager Act. Me by Mr. Hurd, and second by Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd.
Mr. Helmuth, yes.
Mr. Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Yeah. So.
One of these times we're gonna really screw you guys up and me and Eric are gonna say yes, when each other's names are called out.
You know, I I I do better here when I can like see you both in like different squares, I mean, when I'm looking like, anyways. Uh, so do, uh, the clerk, um, we have a. Motion discussion regarding the clerk. Article, the clerk, the article related to the clerk's position. Okay, alright, you know, so, um, I will, um, toss something in. You know, so, eh, I am. I wanted to explore, you know, new growth, I mean, in a very, um, systematic way, for lack of a better word. Eh, so I I like for us to, eh, as a town, try to figure out, you know, a strategic plan, eh, for for new growth. Eh, eh, uh, we talk about how important it is a lot, you know, and and realize, I think, the benefits of it. Eh, but I'd like for us to really look at what it takes to do it, I mean, and then set about doing it. You know, and I I would imagine, I mean, uh, we could probably ask the town manager to create something like this. I mean, what I found as a big positive, I mean, from, um, setting up a study committee for the youth and adult advisory group. Was that it brought more people into the process, you know, and and and. The, that ended up as something different than I would have come up with my own and I kind of like it. I mean, and it involves being a twelve members of the community, I mean, who now have a real stake in it. I think this would be even bigger, you know, uh, and and I I think it would be, let people know that this is something that we are really serious about. I mean, and get their ideas about how to do it, get by, and cause it it would affect so many aspects of the town, you know, uh, and and so. Um, I I would like to bring that force, I mean, as an article, uh, by the select board to get to request that. Uh, the town, I mean, create a study committee for, uh, strategic. A strategic plan for the new growth. I know it's a new idea, you know, so, so, and then maybe, maybe I will take advantage of the fact that that we we have a bit more time. You know, to to get our our article in and to to, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Helmuth, but but the, yeah. I I understand where you're coming from, maybe it is better to hear to it, but no one really kind of knows what's on the. Warrant, I mean, uh, you know, another article, so it's not like anyone knows that this was the one that came in late, although by virtue of this meeting, they could, you know.
Alright.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we close the warrant when we say we close the warrant. There are ways to get things, uh, on the warrant, um, un- under the, under the, in that window. I I just think that's best to avoid confusion on the part of the public.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Mr. Herr.
Uh, uh, I, I, we, we put the art, the agenda item as articles to include on the warrant. And as evidence from a memo, if there's other things that the board wants to put on, um, you certainly can. But I I, again, we do have the time of putting things on the special time any warrant. Um, so, uh, if folks would like to have something more specific, um, that is an option, I just want folks to understand that they have.
Right, right, alright, well, and then 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 there are other ways, um, to to get, to get this on, eh, so, okay, well, um. And all I can say is that if it does go to Tommy, I hope it gets better reception than this, you know, so, so, uh, we will, we will, we will move on. You know, I think we've, um, cleared this, um, this one, you know, and will now move to, uh, item number fourteen. Discussion and potential vote, in-person participation at select board meetings. So, we start this one off by just explaining, I mean, the collateral that I provided, I mean, on this, on for this, this item, I mean, and so. Eh, um, eh, I wanted to give you a sense with the the hardcore scientific papers where, I mean, the source of my thinking, I mean, and and. I mean, and for anyone, even a layperson, generally, even even the science types, I mean, we go to fit the discussion. I mean, you know, you may read the abstract and you go to the bottom, rediscussion, and then you go back to the top or whatever you need to back up, uh, the conclusions in the discussion. But I just wanted to get you, give you a sense of, of why it is that eh, I approach eh, the, um, virus and its variants the way that I do. Uh, the more lay articles were more to let you know what the thinking was, what I started thinking as, I mean, months ago. Cause usually I like to see how accurate a prediction is, I mean, and sources that make accurate predictions. Or generally the ones that I will, uh, pay more attention to when they make, uh, other predictions, I mean, and, uh, the, the, uh, the nature one on the pipeline. On, um, possible vaccines was to say, there is hope, uh, that eh, we will get through this, I mean, in a way, you know, that, uh, will protect us. Being in a much better sense, I mean, than we're getting from the current set of of, um, vaccines. I mean, so I want to go first because I just want to, I think the preponderance of those articles probably lead you to a different conclusion than where I'm gonna land. And and that is, it's like, eh, people know, at this point, I think all they need to know, and they're gonna take the risk that they want to take. I mean, and as long as the town, eh, isn't at risk, I mean, for inviting people into closed spaces with not the best circulation. It, uh, unmasked, I mean, then I would say if they want to come, so it's like board meeting, they know, I'm not gonna object to it. You know, uh, eh, my only concerns generally before this was that I wasn't saying enough about how I felt about things. But partly I didn't because I didn't want to become like the argument, I mean, so that it would be something about the fact that I'm making an argument that makes people resistant to the information. So I kind of felt, you know, people are intelligent here, they can get the information, they can make their own decisions. I mean, and so, and that's where I stand on inviting people in, I'm gonna mask, I mean, when I'm there because I'm masking pretty much everywhere. I go when I am around other people, you know, so, so I went first, I mean, I opened it up. Mr. Hi, Mr. Hi, that's a new one, Mr. Herr.
Um. So I I I guess, a question for Attorney Heim, do we need a motion if, so where's the chair's meeting and the chair's declared that? He will allow the public in, do we need a motion from the board?
I think if you want, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, please.
Um, the, the, the board, the chair, you're correct, Mr. Herr, the chair regulates the sort of conduct of meetings. Uh, but if you guys want to have an agreed upon set of parameters, that's certainly fine for you guys to make a decision as a body. But but the board, the chair does generally set the sort of parameters for how the meeting will operate.
Yeah, well, I make a motion that we allow the public into our meetings. I think realistically, I mean, we're probably talking, it could be, you can have a whole discussion about this and be much ado about no- nothing. Cause most people, let's be honest, are going to participate remotely if they can. Um, I think everyone knows where I am on this, I, I didn't know where the discussion was gonna go, so I'm geared up in different ways. But I'm not gonna, you know, take this to a place it doesn't need to go because, you know, I think we are gonna come to a common answer here. But again, I I think, you know, if you look around our neighbors, they've done the same. And I think you, as I've mentioned last, I mean, that it's time for us to allow somebody to do so and to do so safely. Um, people have to be smart, you know, if you're sick, don't come to our meetings, participate. Participate remotely, just like we do as a board, we say that, you know, if we don't feel good, we're not gonna come into and sit next to our colleagues. Um, but I think for some people, it may be. That are itching to get back in in participate in the process, I think they'll look forward to this. Again, I don't think it will be a ton of people that are gonna stampede into our meetings like it used to be. But I think it's a good first step and we can always change it if it becomes more than members are comfortable with. And we are surprised by the attendance, then we can address it at that time. But at this point, I do think that this is the right one for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Herr, anyone else? Well, eh, yeah, Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for discussing, I'll, I'll second Mr. Herr's motion and, um, yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing what any other colleagues might have to say. But I think it's, 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 I, I think there still has to be some discretion in the chair if we're getting guidance as, as we go forward in terms of, um, you know, whether we get it from. From our health department or in 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 terms of in in-person meetings, but I mean, I certainly will second the motion for for discussion before the full board now.
Thank you, Mr. Corsi. Yeah. Mr. Helmuth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, yeah, I agree with Mr. De Corsi that, um, and I'm happy to support the motion because I I take this as an expression of the, of the board's, uh, preference. And I, you know, appreciate the chair's already is 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 open to that. Um, but my understanding is, as, as Attorney Heim said, that, you know, that the. The the discretion still lies with the chair and 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 my expectation would be that, um, on the advice of. The Health Director, Health Department Director, the Board of Health or other, uh, other authorities. Um, if the chair believes that the, you know, situation is changing, I would fully expect the chair to feel comfortable and empowered to, to make the decision that in fact isn't his power. Um, to change that, so that that would be just personally how I feel. Uh, but but given the, my lay understanding of the situation now, I I'm comfortable with that, I might also choose to wear a mask. I would suggest that we make good use of filtration units that are in the select board chambers of, on the theory of additive layers of protection. And and, you know, and go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Alright, so, um, so, Mr. Heim, I mean, I I had posed question, eh, there are no, we're not putting ourselves at any kind of increased risk. I mean, for legal action, right, by doing this?
By taking.
By allowing in-person more people in to the chamber?
No, I I don't believe, if if we're being, Mr. Chair, the goy, duty, candor with respect to this, I don't think that the board would create some risk. If you're talking about illegal action against the town based on a theory of negligence or something like that, uh, or, you know, some sort of. I I think if you, I think if the town was told by the state that, uh, you can't, uh, convene, uh, meetings of more than ten or something like that. That would be one thing, but it's not my understanding that there are any such restrictions in place at this time.
Yeah, just need to check, you know, cause, cause people will sue me over anything, and so I just wanted to get a sense of, I mean, as to how you felt about it, so.
That is true, Mr. Chair, people will sue over just about anything, um, and I I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Sure, you know, so, um, well. In the two months that I have left, you know, uh, if, uh, eh, look, if things change, I mean, I'll be, eh, eh. I guess I'm the most sensitive to this, you know, but it's more so from a sense of, uh, cat, not only protecting other people, but just trying to like, be, um. Deal with this in the best way for, and this is gonna sound kind of hokey, but for the species, because it's like, I mean, each infection just creates potentially more variants. I mean, and the only way we're going to quash this thing is if we get a can, um, um, vaccine, I mean, or we, you know. As a species, just try to reduce, I mean, the amount that it in mutates, I mean, look, we, we started off, I mean, wrong on this, and that's the problem. You know, uh, and and the way we handled it financially was wrong too, I mean, instead of, we stopped freezing debt, you know. And just keeping people be alive and, I mean, by giving them the income that they needed, I mean, we essentially just said, hey. We'll give you money to to pay your debts, I mean, we essentially just funneled the money up to the people who ha- hold the debt, I mean, and so. No wonder like people just got really frustrated, I mean, by the way things played out, uh, and so, so we just went about it the wrong way. And now we're standing in a bad situation, I mean, and and, I mean, what we're doing, I mean, uh, isn't making a whole lot better. So that's where I'm coming from, eh, but I feel that I shouldn't impose that mindset on people who feel really deprived. Eh, but I feel that I shouldn't impose that mindset on people who feel really deprived. Eh, by eh, not having people in a room or not, you know, meeting, um, a- as a group, because I think. Me, the, the mental stress me for. If folks feel that way, me outweighs me the potential um, benefits, meaning of, of staying, uh. Relatively healthy, me, and I have other concerns about um, long COVID, but that's me, so, as I said, I mean, um. Um, people at this point know. Me, um, but the risks are, me, um, and so, uh, I think because we open the doors, me, they don't have to walk in. Me, um, we're giving them opportunities, meaning to do things, um, um, remotely, you know, uh, if, um. So, uh, I have generally tried to be a chair that is listening to the desires of my colleagues. You know, and, and I'm, I'm inclined to go with that now, and if any of you all. Express a desire to do things differently, you know, I'll listen to that and, and bring it back to discussion, you know, and. And we'll just decide things that way, and I, I'll just add one other thing I did talk to, um. Miss Meyer, I mean, and I know that there is me some issue with respect to. Access, you know, to our chambers, and, and I've been assured that we are working on that as quickly as we can. I think there's an issue with the glass door, meaning that we need to get eh, uh. Figure out how to put a handle on it, being, I mean, so, uh, so it's not like we're ignoring it, we, we are working on it, I don't think we have a timeline. As to when it will be adjusted so that there is full ADA access to chamber, but we are working on that. So, um, so. It's a motion to bring people in, you know, I'll let people in by Mister De Corsi, eh, I'm sorry, but Mister Heard, being a second. By Mister Corsi, if there's no further discussion, uh, we will have a vote. Me, I will listen to the outcome of that vote, and because it is a chair's decision, it will be my decision. And I will have to live with the response to it, because it is my call, you know, so, um, any further discussion? Okay, Mister Heim.
Mister Heard.
Yes.
Mister De Corsi?
Yes.
Mister Helmuth?
Yes.
This is Mahan?
Yes.
Mister Diggin's?
Yes.
She doesn't speak.
Alright, so, um, so. Let in, yeah, so, alright, uh, so we, um, now move on to second open forum, um, anyone there? Alright, I think we can move along, um, correspondence received, yeah. So we have a save the AL wife book letter to mass DEP, MWRA, um. I forget who that's by, I read it, but I forget who it's by, I, I, oh, I know, so I just buy, buy save the, the AL wife, you know, uh, and. Uh, number sixteen, Mass Ave Appleton pedestrian safety concerns and recommendations by Petro Sophia. Uh, and then seventeen, recommendation Magliozzi Boulevard. Or way or lane, you know, by the Public Memorial Committee, and number eighteen, a foot of the Rocks Master Plan. By Alan Tasty, and so, Mister Mahan?
Move receipt.
And motion received by Mister Mahan, and a second by Mister Heard, and Mister Helmuth.
Thank you, uh, might I suggest a friendly amendment to the motion to, for referral to tech on the traffic letter? And referral to the chair to consider the Maliazi Way matter at a future select board meeting?
Yes, yes. Um, this behind?
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, yeah, um, exactly, that's, and, um. I just want to add on the foot of the Rocks Master Plan, you know, that we may have a. Maybe a forum, you know, for, uh, for that at some point, eh, perhaps in, in March or maybe, um, in April or May. Eh, so that Mister Tassi can, uh, present that more fully to, uh, the public, you know, so. Uh, although I think we will hear a little bit about this, um, when DG comes to talk with us, so. Uh, with a motion to receive with the sending of the mass, mass app Appleton to. Tac and the Magalazi Boulevard, um, to discuss a little meeting, a motion by Mister. Mister Mahan and a second by, by Mister Heard, you know, Mister Heim.
Mister Heard?
Yes.
Mister Corsi?
Yes.
Mister Helmuth?
Yes.
This is Mahan?
Yeah.
Mister Diggin's?
Yes.
She doesn't speak.
Great, alright, new business. Uh, okay, uh, I will start with, um, this is Miss Meyer.
No, no business, thank you, Lon.
Uh, and Mister Heim?
No, no business, thank you, Mister Chair.
Mister Feeny? Alright, uh, Mister Helmuth?
No, no business, thank you, Mister Chair.
Mister Corsi?
Thank you, Mister Chair, uh, briefly, two, two quick items, um, one, I, I. A couple of people, actually shoppers in the, the heights had reached out to me with an inquiry. About the, the no parking for the taxi stand in front of the MBTA, um, that bus, eh, people there and, and. You know, the question was, eh, how often are we looking into whether they should remain or, or be taken away? And at some point, I would like to maybe fall, follow up with the town manager and, and, um, just talk about that process, but I did wanna. Acknowledge the inquiry because on, on a few occasions, people have been shopping up there. Um, to, to my knowledge anyway, that, there, there aren't cats using that, those spots up at the heights, and it's. Two or three spots that potentially may be available, but I, I wanna get more information before we get back to them on that. Um, the second thing is, this Friday, our town treasurer, Phyllis Marshall will be retiring. Um, I wanted to wish her well on her retirement and thank her for her service to the town since she became treasurer in two thousand eighteen. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Welcome. Mister Heard?
Yes, um, just wanted to let the board know that the twenty twenty-five. Committee had our first meeting last week at long last, it took some time to put the membership together, but. We did meet with the five or six members that we had and decided that we have a lot of work to do, so we're gonna meet. Very, much more frequently, um, coming up, but it's exciting to start talking about what the events are gonna be. So at some point, we'll probably put an update to the board about. You know, what the efforts have been and what we're looking for, and because it will be certainly a team effort to get that done. Um, two short years from now, um, but, so that, that's in process. Then I wanted to, I'm not sure where the most appropriate place to put this up, I, I don't know, I don't know if I ever brought up a. Traffic issue with the board, but I was driving down by the Downland School, we have new drop off and pickup air, area and. It's works very well up front, but over behind the school, I was driving today. You know, the conditions are a little rough, but at Rhine Cliff in Dow Ave. There was a bus that couldn't make the turn, and there was two buses back to back, because it was cars parked on both sides of Dow Ave. Right where it meets Rhine Cliff, and I didn't see any signage preventing that. So whether it be through the town manager's office, or I don't know, something this insignificance needs to be referred to tack. If somebody can just take a look at potentially having no parking on one side of the street. Right at the tip of Rhine Cliff, I think it would prevent some major pr- traffic jams. And the no parking could be limited to drop off and pickup times, but I think in general. Just a straight no parking tends to work out better, because sometimes in drop off pickup, people think, well, you know, I'm only there for a few minutes and. But, um, that's something that if, at the chair's discretion where that, that inquiry could go to, and I can give you some more information about that offline if needed.
Yeah, uh, so the only reason I'm gonna suggest that we send it to Tac is that I think we're dealing with something along, um, Ryan, Ryan. Crossed, is it cross or craft?
Rhine Cliff. Rhine Cliff runs near the intersection of Appleton.
Yeah.
They're working on that, um, but they certainly could, I think they could look at this and make a pretty quick decision on it.
Yeah, I mean, we maybe fit it into a, a larger context, I mean, but not necessarily slow it down, but, but, uh. But if you just maybe like zip me a quick email or something, then I can send it me to, to, to Laura Swan. Me and say this is coming from, from this like board, being in, and, and then she can either like. Tell me how it fits into what we're currently doing, or, or, or we generate a new ticket for lack of a better word, you know, so.
Alright, well done, thank you.
Sure, Mister Mahan?
Sorry, I had. I missed the helmet ahead of me in my head, um, or maybe you already said no, two things, um, the first one, and I don't. Unless the deputy town manager has something that he can apprise the board of tonight, I'll. I guess I'd put it in as a request, but I just want to, on Chestnut Street, um, where we had. Uh, a year ago in the spring, there was some issue with. An email that got sent, and then it didn't get sent, and it slowed the process down, and then we got to the fall. And I believe my memory is for the traffic improvements, um, where the Algen resident was killed. Um, down on Chestnut Street, um. It was discussed by the previous town manager, um, and perhaps the current town manager, but I, I definitely the previous town manager. That, um, improvements, uh, had been made, some improvements had already been made, and the rest. Because of the time delay would be made in the spring, so, um, I don't expect Mister Feeny unless he knows. You can confirm any of that, if not, if, um, through you to the town manager's office, just sort of a tickle reminder. That are we all set for a go with the final traffic improvements that needed more time? That those will be able to happen in the spring.
Mister Feeny?
Chair, uh, Miss Mahan, I can definitively say that the design team is on track, and we have secured via. Uh, a grant from the state, a portion of the funding for the work, so the design is progressing. I don't have at my fingertips exact dates or timelines for completion, but I do know that we are tracking well for this. Uh, upcoming construction season.
Okay, and if I could just, uh, make a request, um, to the deputy town manager that. Either by March first or March thirty-first, if the board could receive information. An email or correspondence received of what is left in the construction. And what are the anticipated dates that that work will start, just so when people start asking us, um. We'll have the information, so, and, and thank you, Mister Feeny, I had a feeling you kinda knew, but. I wanted to give you it out, you did it, and then the second thing is, and I'll have a further discussion with the chair on this, but, um, I'm gonna discuss with the chair about. Um, hopefully in fe- one of the February agendas, having, um, the, uh. Save the Allies Group, uh, Kristen Anderson, and through her, Jean Benson, who I believe is also on our. Redevelopment Board, but not in his capacity that way, um, they, they'd like to come in, um. And just discuss with the board eh, an update, um, Jean Benson on behalf of Save the Allies has filed some legislation. Which, um, is currently in the State House, and they wanna explain it to the board and hopefully get our support. Um, for that as well as, uh, there was some nominal money, it's about forty or fifty thousand that was secured. Uh, either as in the bond or supplemental bond, um. Dedicated for the AL wife, but I believe there is the AL wife's area, but I believe there is some discussion in, in the Save the AL wife. Brook, and I'm sure the town manager, uh, discussing possibly using them closer towards. Magnolia Thon, Thondike, but, but anyway, so I'm gonna talk to the chair about hopefully an agenda item. Do no more than three speakers, three minutes each regarding the AL wife. Regarding their DEP submission, regarding the money that the legislative delegation got, as well as regarding the legislation that. Jean Benson is the author and Save the AL wife Brook is filed in the State House, uh, it has a docket number. And they'd like to present it to us for our thoughts and hopefully maybe, um, endorsement, so, thank you, I know that was a long way to say. Uh, Mister Diggin's, Mister Chair, please remind me when I call you, why did I wanna talk to you? It was that AL wife agenda item, thank you.
You, you had me at three speakers, three minutes each, and so, so, I mean, that's, that's, that's the ticket, you know. So, I, I, I am sorry, I have a, 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 a number of items, I mean, I'm gonna go through them quickly, talk quickly, I'll talk fast, I'm gonna start off with. The, the difficult one, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge what happened in LA, you know. You know, regardless of, of, of eh, with the, the shooting, you know, on, um, Lunar New Year, I mean, and. Me, regardless of the parties involved, me, me, I mean, it's, it's like the, the, the stats on, on the shootings in this country have just been bad. Uh, they're getting worse, me, uh, and, and in regards to where you fall, me, with respect to. The weapons that are being used, me, it's, it's, it's just that, I think, me, less in Arlington, try to, um. Look out for each other in respect to if you see someone that's in trouble, being having a hard time, you know, me. Even if you can't be the one to help them, me, uh, just try to look out for them in a way that can get them. Um, some, some help, me, uh, and, and so, um, cause there's some kind of anger, me, that's driving. This mean, and I think if we can do anything in our community, you know, to help me minimize me that, then. Then, um, hopefully, you know, we can continue to be, um, fortunate, you know, so. So there's that, you know, so everything else is gonna be a lot lighter, and, uh, so, uh, the equity audit, you know, is going to be sent to us, me, for our next meeting. Uh, we can approve it, eh, uh, they would like to do a longer presentation, me, to the community, me, and so. I am working with them to, um, do a, a forum on the thirteenth, that'd be the Monday after. Our meeting on the sixth, me, um, if three of us. Participate in it, it can be held as a select board meeting, you know, otherwise, maybe we can just hold it eh, as a forum. Maybe, um, sponsored by select board or something, me, but it won't be a unofficial select board meeting. And so, right now, I'm thinking is that we'll do it, I mean, around six thirty, and, and right now, it's also looking like it'll be hybrid, and so. Just wanna flag that, but that'll be an opportunity for them to do a much longer presentation with a lot longer, um, um. Audience participation, me, cause, um, yeah, so I'll leave it at that, and, uh, so. On the sixth two, we, uh, the town manager now is planning on doing his budget, um, proposal, me, so we will give him. A fair amount of time on that, eh, and CD BG will be, um, doing their presentation, that will be a fairly. Long one-two, so there's not gonna be too much room on the agenda for much else, uh, at that meeting, we have. Um, one of the meeting on the twenty-seventh, you know, uh, so, there's that, you know, and. Um, I, oh, I mentioned, me, when we were talking about the overnight parking, that potentially we could do, uh, forum, me, on. The fifteenth, so I will circle back to Mister Corsi, being to see how he feels about that, you know, and I also mentioned when we were talking about the. Uh, town manager search that we might wanna do our meeting, in, um, our interview process during that, um, vacation week, I mean, and so. Um, let me know your thoughts about that, and we'll probably maybe, um, s- settle on some dates, me, you know, at the next meeting. Um, we, I talked with the, the, the vice chair on this, me, and also town manager, we reduced in our, um. From four positions in the select board's office to three and a half, you know, uh, but we're going ahead, being and, and filling that half is more of a halftime. Court position, uh, with the expectation that if we do have to do more stuff with respect to overnight parking, that person can, can help. Um, with that, you know, certainly, you know, Tac could use some assistance, yeah, it was even the case before we lost our senior. Um, transportation planner, uh, but I also talked with, um, Miss Meyer, and, and, and there's no shortage, me. Of work, me, and, and also, uh, we hope that, my thoughts is that that person can develop more relationship with planning, me, especially from. Transportation angle, uh, and last two items, I'd like to thank Mike Rodamacher for coming to. Uh, East Arlington Liverpool Streets, um, meeting where we just learned a lot about, me, what goes on, you know, with respect to, uh. Transportation plans and, and he's definitely working on creating this, um, transportation improvement program, which will give. Uh, residents a little more insight into me how projects mean or, or progressing along, me, and what people can. which will give, uh, residents a little more insight into me how projects mean or, or progressing along, I mean, what people can expect um, will happen. And finally, it, uh, I, um, was, um, i- in invited to work, talk to the Addison eighth grade students, I mean, in, for their civic action, um, project. It, uh, uh, so long history has how it happened, um, for this year. Uh, but I'll just say the kids are wonderful. Uh, one of the questions from them, uh, uh, was it, um, do, um, are there articles, I mean, uh, for affordable housing? It, uh, and, and I, I just could have reached to the screen and hugged them all. And I was just thinking like, who are the parents and the teachers that are, 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 are raising these kids? See, then, and it's us, me, in the context was that they were trying to determine what they could do, uh, in town meeting. And I was expecting like the, the sustainable stuff, the environment, I mean, but, but the affordable housing, what, I mean, that's just, I was delighted uh, to, to, to hear that. And so, uh, it's a good community, you know, that really cares. And, and the next generation is, is amazing. It just makes me want to work even more on their behalf. So, thank you for listening, indulgence, me, you know, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, yeah, motion, um, Ms. Mahan, a second by Mr. Corsi, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Shannon's vote.
Take care, everybody. Good meeting. Bye-bye.